Here is Chris.
Certainly, it's able.
Oh, there he is, okay, good.
Just sign the memo.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, good evening, at six thirty, I called the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. I just want to point out that we, at six o'clock, had an executive session, discussed litigation matters relative to the First Congregational Church and the cemetery topics over there. So, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forged in sands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, before I open up weekly briefing to other people, I just want to make a comment, and that is, I think, most people know, everybody knows, that Lou and Sally Urbano have been leading the effort on Elbra House to, I call it, revitalize Elbra House. You can see out here, the painting that's been done. Unfortunately, about noon time on Friday, as Lou was finishing up some work on the front of the building, he was coming down a ladder, got about seven feet off the ground, and had an accident. It wasn't a favorable accident, his, I was there at the time, his right ankle took a forty-five degree angle. All three Harwich buses, if you will, were out of, out on service calls, if you will, so Brewster had to come, et cetera, et cetera. Lou ended up going to Kegout Hospital, then he got transferred to Deaconess, and ended up having a rod and some other hardware put into his ankle. And I'm fortunate, we're all fortunate to say that he's back home now, he came home this afternoon, three o'clock, something like that. Could have been a lot worse, as the paramedic said, you know, if he had landed on his head or back or something, would be mid-flight. So, but Lou's big concern, quite frankly, is that he wants to make sure that what happened to him does not detract from the spirit of volunteerism in the town. And I assured him that that would not be the case, and I think he can be, and will continue to be, a prime example of volunteerism, if you will. In the back of the room is the banner that they hung on Friday morning, having to do with the historic colors over there. I took that down on, I think it was Sunday morning, and anybody who would like to just express their best wishes, or whatever, get well to Lou, I'd certainly appreciate that. And in a couple of days, when he's up for having a visitor or two, then my intention is to take it over there. So, if you're so inclined, please, please fill that out. I will say, as you would expect, Sally was with him, you know, virtually twenty-four hours a day during the whole process, so we just wish him well. My understanding is he'll be off his feet for four weeks, and then he'll start moving around a little bit more, so. And a lot of, a lot of physical therapy, I'm sure. Okay? Any else on that? Anybody else for weekly briefing? Chief.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I just want to remind folks that if they have an emergency, that you don't call the business line, don't call the fire prevention line, you call nine-one-one. And over the summer, we've had several instances of people trying to reach the fire station for help on the business lines. And when they're doing, they're doing up to twenty, twenty-two calls a day, and you got a, you had an example of that the other day, where all three ambulances were busy, there may be no one in there to answer that business line. It goes to voicemail, and then it instructs folks to hang up and dial nine-one-one, but we're still getting those calls. Occasionally, we're getting a call left on the secretary's voicemail Monday morning, that looking for someone to come and help somebody with their carbon monoxide detectors going off. So, please, I just ask the people to, if you have any question, any issues, dial nine-one-one.
Yeah, and I think with cell phones, get yourself prepared to remember your access code or whatever, because, you know, you sit over there and start doing it, and I have to admit, it took me an extra twenty seconds to get through, whatever, but it worked out.
There you go, okay. And on some of the, I do know, like, on my phone, I don't need the access code to dial nine-one-one, it'll go through. No access code needed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Weekly briefing? Okay, we'll move on to public comment and announcement. Any public comments or announcements? Quiet crew tonight so far. Okay, we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Janelle?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, A, approve minutes from June eighth, two thousand fifteen, regular meeting, June fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, regular meeting, June twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen, regular meeting, June twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen, South Harwich Meeting House tour, and July thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, executive session. B, approve the request by the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., to approve and sign proclamation declaring September twenty-fifteen as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Harwich. C, accept the resignation of Paul Lag from the Harwich Cultural Council, effective immediately. D, authorize Chair to sign the Mass DOT Title Six Non-Discrimination Assurance Requirement. E, confirm appointment of Jennifer Clark as Administrative Assistant in the Health and Conservation Departments, as recommended. F, approve request for assistance from the Caleb Chase Fund, as recommended. G, approve application for one-day entertainment license by Harwich Conservation Trust for Wildlands Music and Art Stroll for Saturday, September nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. Waive the twenty-five-dollar application fee, approve the use of the middle school parking lot, and Harbor Masters Bank Street Building Parking Lot. H, approve application by American Lung Association for the Thirty-First Annual Autumn Escape Bike Trek from September twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, contingent on approval by Mass DOT. I, approve requests to participate in and support the Barnstable County Regional Emergency Planning Committee's Regional Sheltering Plan and authorize Town Administrator to sign acceptance letter. And J, approve line item deficit transfers, as recommended by Town Accountant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moving to second, approve consent agenda items A through J. Discussion? Right now, we'll put it to a vote, also, fair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's a vote, thank you. On K, which is the approved or proposed accounting change for CPC fund, as recommended by the Town Accountant, there are some concerns, they're just, and my understanding is, that, Andy, you presented the material, or at least provided the material to the Finance Committee at their last meeting, my understanding is, they didn't actually act on anything, they didn't take a vote on it?
They did not.
They did not, yeah. And then I think there was some question about the legality of it, that they want to clear it up.
That's correct.
And in my opinion, we should just wait until we get those answers, and then bring it back. Is there, is there a time-sensitive urgency to get this done?
Not at all, my plan was to implement this in two thousand and seventeen.
Okay. All right, good. So, we will do that. K, we'll bring back once Finance Committee, once you get a legal opinion, and once Finance Committee takes an action on it, so. And I assume they will put it on their next agenda. Okay? All right, and L and M, I'm going to recuse myself and ask Linda to take that on.
Do I have a motion on items L and M? Janelle?
Ms. Vice Chair, I move that we accept L, approved list of election officers as submitted by Democratic Town Committee, and M, confirm vote to approve list of election officers as submitted by Republican Town Committee, item to be taken up separately.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? One recusal. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to public hearings and presentations. We asked Town Councilor John Giorgio to come in for three topics. One is the, the question, you know, we've been kicking around, can we, is it possible to have a non-binding ballot question associated with possibilities, or at least options, for the middle school repurpose? Last time we were here, we had a discussion after we had appointed an individual in, in the fire service, about the Board of Selectmen's power to do that, Chief's power to do that, strong chief, et cetera, et cetera. And also looked at your, at that time, John, your opinion back in two thousand and thirteen, I believe it was. So, we wanted to get that cleaned up, and we wanted to also know if that's the way it's interpreted, how do we fix it? Because I think the sense is, well, was we wanted to enforce strong, strong chief, and make sure that as we go forward, that the Fire Chief in particular has that, you know, that appointing authority, if you will. So, how do we do it? You know? And then the sewer fee attached to water rates, I know is a concern of yours, from, you know, legality, sense of it, and how you do it. So, come on up in the hot seat, and we'll take those in that order, if you don't mind, and very good. Non-binding ballot question for the middle school.
Yes, so, the short answer to the question is that the Board of Selectmen has the authority to place a non-binding question on the ballot at an annual election. So, you could, with a simple vote of this board, approve a question that would go on the May two thousand and sixteen ballot. Just that you know, there is a, if, there is also a process for a citizens' initiative petition to achieve the same thing, but the Selectmen can do it on their own motion. It has to be at an annual town election. One of the other questions, however, that I was asked on this was whether or not you could include on the ballot itself explanatory material beyond the question itself. And unfortunately, the answer to that is no. Access to the ballot is strictly regulated, even for non-binding questions, and there is no ability to have even just explanatory information on the ballot. That doesn't prevent the Board, however, from posting something on the website, having discussions at meetings, articles in the newspaper explaining what it is the Selectmen are trying to accomplish. So, we will, if that's the way you want to go, we will work with the Town Administrator to draft a ballot question, a non-binding ballot question, which you, of course, would approve. And I think the intent was to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The intent was to put forward various options. I think there were three of them that you were thinking about. The, the key to a ballot question is to keep it simple. And from what I saw, I thought those questions were fairly simple, and we could certainly provide, have a, really, a menu approach, if you will, of three different, of three different concepts for the middle school.
But are you saying that you can say concept A, concept B, and concept C in words? But you can't attach a dollar value to them? You can only say where they are? In other words, I'm making this up completely, but if you said, do you want to demolish the middle school at a cost of, pick a number, two million dollars?
Yep.
Do you want to keep it as municipal use at a cost of five million dollars? Do you want to make it into a housing thing at three dollars and twenty-five cents? Can you say those things? Can you put numbers in there? You can get back to us on that.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to get back to you on that, Peter. I think that would be okay, as long as it was within the four corners of the question. What we, what we would have to make sure of is that we don't convert this question into an advocacy piece by the Selectmen.
I understand.
So, with that caveat, I think we, we have a-
But if you're trying to lay out, I mean, if you're trying to lay out what we think the facts are?
Yep.
Both use-wise and what the potential financial implications are, and, you know, other things, who knows what else it is?
Yep.
I would just say, I'd like to sort that out sooner rather than later.
Sure, okay.
Linda, do you have a question?
And, and this can all be done in one ballot question?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you get to pick one on the ballot question?
So, it's a ballot question, just like when you have an election, there can be five people running for something, and it says, "Vote for one," and you tally up the votes, and whoever gets the most votes of those five wins.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll have to look at that question carefully, Linda, because it is possible that voters would want the option of voting for more than one. And then who, whichever question got the most number of votes would be the direction provided to the Board of Selectmen.
I'm trying to, but what I'm trying to get clarity on is, is it one question, or is it three questions? Because if it's three questions, and everybody answers yes to all of them, then we're still in the same pickle. But if it's one question, and it says, "Pick one."
Right.
Pick the one you want to have happen, then we can tally those and actually get a sense of the town. That's where I'm driving, and I didn't see that, I didn't see the question asked, so therefore, it didn't get answered.
Well, I, I think we could certainly fashion a question that, that achieves that result, and I'm happy to work on that. But again, we have to be careful of how these questions are structured, even though it's non-binding, you know, the, and I'm thinking of the way you can do pyramid overrides under Proposition Two and a Half. Let me look into that a little bit further, to see exactly how we can structure that question.
We're trying to get a sense of what people want to do.
Yeah, understood. But I have both of those questions down here.
I have something to say about the, the numbers concept of the questions. From what I understand, the numbers would be estimates, unlike, for instance, if we're voting on whatever the, the number was, I can't remember exactly, for the new ambulance, where we know that it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, I think it's inappropriate to put an estimate number on there, because if we're going to be passing out information prior to the vote, or having information posted on the website, that's where the numbers, the estimated numbers belong, I don't think it belongs on the ballot question itself, because they aren't true and factual numbers.
I tend to disagree with that, and, and part of the reason is, is a, is a subgroup of the Board of Selectmen is looking now at the middle school repurpose, and part of their task is to come up with, you know, what, what these, call it capital numbers, operating numbers, whatever it is, associated with, with some options. Put some meat on the bones, basically, is the way we describe it, so. But we can sort that out as we go forward, Linda.
Can we, would it be possible to see this language sooner, rather than, you know, March first, we're about ready to close a warrant?
Absolutely.
So, that, if that's all right, Peter?
Oh, sure.
So that we can actually have a chance to look at it, to ask more questions, to get things set, so we're not doing it in a fire drill.
I'll get that language to you in the next couple of weeks, would that be acceptable?
As a draft, sure.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Anybody out there in the audience have a question on that topic? No? John, do you have anything else?
No, the only thing I would, of course, maybe state the obvious, not, I'm sure the Selectmen understand this, but for anybody listening or in the audience, so, that is truly a non-binding question. Let's assume for a moment, the consensus is, let's sell the building, just, then, that would require, at a subsequent time, a town meeting authorization. Same thing, if the option that's selected requires money, that would require then a binding vote to transfer the land and authorize the sale, or to appropriate a sum of money to achieve the goal, just so that everyone understands that.
Which would be another year?
I'm sorry?
Another year.
Not necessarily.
Or a special town.
Janelle, it could be a special town meeting. There's no reason why that couldn't be done at a special, or it could wait until the, I guess, the two thousand and seventeen annual town meeting. That's, that would be entirely up to the Board of Selectmen.
Is there any reason we couldn't have this question on a special town meeting? If we're going to have a fall special town meeting, is there any reason we cannot put this on it?
So, you can have a non-binding question on a town meeting, you can do that. It's not regulated by, by the statute on ballot questions. What, what I was asked was, is there a way to put a non-binding question on the election ballot, so that the entire town votes? And that, that was the context of my answer. But there's not, no reason why the Selectmen couldn't have non-binding town meeting warrant articles as well.
Any else? Okay, next topic was the town charter, the appointing authority, particularly the, the Fire Chief?
Yes.
And strong chief discussion, and also the memo that was, I think you authored back in?
Yes.
At the request of Bob Lawton, who was the interim at that time? And-
So, Bob Lawton had asked us, prior to Chris coming on as your permanent Town Administrator, he wanted to get some hopeful, hopefully clarity on some of the appointment issues that I know the Board had been, had been struggling with. So, we developed that opinion, I believe it was in two thousand and thirteen. And it's interesting, because over the years, actually, Chris had asked me to compile sort of a compendium of all of the charter interpretation questions that we have been asked, and I did put that together with, and attached the relevant documents. One of the most significant ones was the appointing authority for various town boards, committees, and officers and employees. So, what we had concluded in that letter was that, in the town charter, the section that references the appointment of the police chief made an explicit reference to what's known as the strong chief, the strong police chief statute, which, as you know, provides that the police chief is appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and any police officers are appointed by the Board of Selectmen as well. In contrast, when it comes to the fire department, the strong chief law says that the Board of Selectmen appoint the Fire Chief, but that the Fire Chief appoints all the firefighters. So, the complication here was that, when you enacted your charter, the charter is silent with respect to the, the strong chief law, and in fact, says, is silent as to the appointment of firefighters. And so, what we did was, we analyzed the other provisions of the charter, and we concluded that the omnibus authority to appoint town employees and officers rests with the Town Administrator, obviously subject to the disapproval of the Board of Selectmen. So, based upon that, and some prevailing case law, we concluded that even though the town had adopted the strong fire chief law, oh, nineteen twenty-six, I think, it was a long time ago, the charter, which was obviously a later action by the town, provided for a different appointing mechanism. It's not perfect, the charter's not perfect, you know, and what I always say to folks is, when you have an issue where your charter does not match what the practice has been, or what the desire is, you have one of two choices. You can conform your practice to what the charter says, or you can amend the charter to make, to conform to what the, the preferred practice is. So, I think you're at that point now, with respect at least to firefighters. And obviously, the, the amending the town charter is a lengthy process. It's not years, but it does take a while to accomplish that. So, I was asked the question, well, is there a way in the interim to provide for the Fire Chief to appoint firefighters? And my answer is, yes, there is. I think that the Town Administrator could delegate his authority under the charter to appoint firefighters, subject to the disapproval of the Selectmen. He could delegate that to the Fire Chief, and the Selectmen could certainly delegate their, if you will, disapproval power, essentially waive that. And so, I drafted up a motion, because that's what I understood the Board wanted. Now, also, I was informed that the Board was interested in pursuing a charter amendment that would essentially codify that practice. And, and so, there's a three-part motion in front of you, that would essentially do, accomplish those three things. And if that were to pass by the Selectmen tonight, and then the Town Administrator was to send a memo to the Fire Chief delegating his appointing authority, then from here on in, as to new appointments of firefighters, it would be the Fire Chief. And that would be, of course, memorialized permanently, when and if a charter amendment is made. So, that would be the process for you to follow. Now, there was some discussion, I understand, that, well, maybe we should make this the same for police officers as well. And I don't know how the Board feels about that, I wasn't privy to that conversation, but I will tell you that, under the general laws, when you have the strong chief law, which you do, the Selectmen retain the authority to appoint police officers. Under the strong fire chief law, the Fire Chief appoints police, firefighters. So, the question becomes, is it appropriate to, to amend the charter to, to have the police officers appointed by the Police Chief? And I think that raises some very interesting policy questions, and I think the Board really needs to think long and hard about that, only because, while I certainly wouldn't denigrate the work of the firefighters, they're, they're very brave, and they do great work. But, you know, police officers have plenary powers, arrest powers, and, you know, can certainly, they carry guns, you know, that kind of thing. So, you know, you want to think carefully about whether you, in fact, as a Board of Selectmen, want to delegate that authority of appointment to the Police Chief. And I don't know where you want to go with that, you don't necessarily have to resolve that issue tonight. My sense was, there was more of a sense of urgency with respect to delegating the authority to appoint firefighters to the Fire Chief, and that motion you have in front of you would, would accomplish that result.
Okay, Michael, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess, I'm a little confused with your, the, the opinion you gave to Bob Lawton.
Yes.
You referred to Section four-four-two of the Charter.
Yes.
In Section four-four-two of the Charter, the very first line states, "Accept as may otherwise be provided by general law."
Right.
So, if you go to general law, Chapter forty-eight, Section forty-two?
Right.
It refers, it says, "He shall have full and absolute authority in administration of the department." There's some more language, too, but that covered it for me. The Charter is superseded by mass general law, correct?
No.
It is not?
No. So, the thing to keep in mind is that a charter can vary the provisions of the general laws. And as a matter of fact, the Charter is deemed consistent with contrary provisions in the general laws. That's one of the reasons why you want to have a charter. Bylaws have to be totally consistent with the general law. So, Mike, you're absolutely right, there is an interpretation problem there, what does that language actually mean? We think that if the intent here is to make it crystal clear in the Charter that the Fire Chief appoints firefighters, we can do that relatively easily with a charter amendment, and we can bridge this gap in the interim with, with the delegation that, that the motion, the motion so, so provides. You know, what's interesting in the, in the Charter is, in the section on the Police Department, there's a reference to the fact that the town adopted the strong police chief law. There's no reference in the Fire section, so there, there is some drafting inconsistency, there's a question as to what the intent was. We came down on the side ultimately of saying it was the Town Administrator's authority to appoint firefighters, which I believe was the practice, in fact, that was occurring. But again, if that's not what you want, there's an easy fix here, and we presented that to you tonight.
Okay, Michael, do you have?
Yeah, so, and, and follow-up, I don't see, I don't see that there is any confusion, and I don't see that there has been any confusion. I asked the, the Fire Chief when the last time this was brought before the Board, or when the Board had ever appointed a firefighter, and he can't recollect any. So, this is, this is fairly new.
Okay.
I think if we're talking about a charter change to clarify in that one position as Fire Chief, then this should be something that we should give to our Charter Review Committee, along with the, the letter, which I'm not sure that they've reviewed this yet or not, and any other changes in the Charter, for that matter. I think it should be a recommendation to the committee that we formed for this reason. But I don't see, vague, maybe?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't specify Fire Chief. However, I, in reading Chapter forty-eight and forty-two, with your referral to four-four-two, and the very first line, "Accept as otherwise provided by general laws," I don't see where this Board has to take any action on this.
Wait. Linda, you had your hand up next to her.
Just for the audience, is there a strong Fire Chief law?
Yes.
So, we have not adopted that?
No, you have adopted that.
We have adopted it.
You have adopted both.
We just don't have it in the Charter.
Correct. You didn't have a reference to it in the Charter.
So, the Charter left that out for some unknown reason?
Yes. Yes.
Sandy Hall, who was part of the original group that put the Charter together.
I was Chairman of the Charter Commission in nineteen eighty-six and nineteen eighty-seven. We wrote the Charter under the advice and counsel of Dr. David Booth, who at the time was probably one of the leading consultants on charters. We wrote the Charter with the clear understanding that it did not need to be comprehensive, that it not, did not have to cover every detail of the government. We proposed a charter that changed the structure of the Board of Selectmen, added a professional administration, and allocated many responsibilities and duties that had previously been held mostly by the Selectmen, sometimes other boards. We made certain boards appointed that had been elected. So, the Charter mostly addressed those issues surrounding the changes. One of the things that we understood as a Board was where the Charter was silent, and deliberately silent, not confusion, not something left out, but something that did not need to be addressed in the Charter, because it was already covered by either our bylaws or the Massachusetts general laws. We had at that time what we understood to be a weak Police Chief and a strong Fire Chief. There was no need to change the way the Fire Department was operating, and in the almost thirty years, hard as it is for me to believe, since we adopted that Charter, there has never been a question about this, there should be no question about this. Our Fire Chief has absolute authority to operate under that nineteen twenty-nine adoption of a strong Fire Chief in the town of Harwich. This is really kind of an unnecessary- This is really kind of an unnecessary exercise.
So let me just ask a question.
Sure.
I mean, none of us are going to be here in sixty years, right? I mean, I certainly-
Well, I plan to be.
I don't plan to be. I'll say it right now, you may be.
I haven't done harassing you.
What's that?
I haven't finished harassing you.
Great.
Well, okay, but I'll go first, so then you'll have a couple of years.
Oh, freedom, yes.
Not have to be around and harass you, whatever.
Okay.
But anyhow, I guess the question remains, you know, if town council had an interpretation problem with it, I'll just call it that at the moment, why don't we want to make it crystal clear by saying, putting in language, we have the strong chief model, and the chief appoints his people? I mean-
My purpose in talking about this at this point is just to provide an overview of what was in the mind of the Charter Commission, the understandings that we operated under at the time. And generally, because you're always going to find things that aren't covered, that aren't specifically addressed in the charter, they were not intended to be addressed in the charter. They were intended to operate as they had, under the bylaws, under the mass general laws. I think even after the charter was adopted, we had a period of time where we adjusted certain bylaws to be consistent with the charter through town meeting. I'm delighted to hear that you want to leave things as they are. That's great, that's fine. I just don't think you really need to do anything specific. If you want to amend the charter to clarify it, that's great too. But I think really, as it stands right now, the authority rests with the fire chief.
I understand.
I don't think you have to delegate it.
I understand that.
Okay.
My problem is, there was an opinion by town council, right?
It's an opinion.
Wrong or different?
It's an opinion.
Contrary, I know, it was contrary to what most of us think has been the practice, right?
Was the intent-
And what was the intent, I understand.
And the practice, yeah.
So why not make that crystal clear? I think it's very simple with a few words, quite frankly.
I'm not suggesting that you don't, I'm just suggesting that it isn't necessary, and I'm trying to explain to you how the charter was intended to function as a whole document.
I understand.
So when these things come up in the future, if the charter is silent, you go to your general laws, you go to your bylaws. That's all, thank you.
If I may-
Angela, did you have a comment before?
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and I certainly respect the previous speaker and what the intent of the Charter Commission was, or the Charter Review Committee. You know, one of the problems you have here is a statute that was accepted eighty years ago, and there's no reference in the charter. So a very simple fix here in this charter amendment would be to simply, in the fire department section, reference the fact that the fire department operates under the strong fire chief law. And then there would be no question, there would be no question that the fire chief would appoint all the firefighters. So, again, it's a very simple fix. I certainly agree that you don't have to put everything into a charter. But, you know, there is case law out there that can be interpreted that, to say that because the charter was enacted later, it supersedes the strong fire chief law. I just think it's the better practice to codify that in the charter, and again, it's a very simple amendment to make. It's not a wholesale revision of the charter.
Angela, do you have a comment?
Just a comment and then a question. The comment is that a number of times, the Charter Review Committee is asked that we or whoever is interested in the change provide the written change to them. They have been very clear that they are not going to write charter changes. And at, at least two or three times, and have asked to have them, you know, presented. And then they will review them and do what needs to be done.
Okay, did you have a question?
I did, but I lost the question, I'm sorry.
Linda, do you have some follow-up there?
One is, just the comment that regardless of the intent of what anybody thinks they were trying, accomplishing, or the intent that we were going to do this or that, if the law, if the wording to some people is not clear, then I think we just, rather than argue about it as to what anybody's intent was, or they meant, or they didn't mean, or anything, you just fix it and go forward with what we would like to have happen. And I think that that makes a lot of sense. I have a question, but I do have a question for you, sir, which is, if a, and this is charter change in general, we have a bylaw and Charter Review Committee. What is, if you would be so kind as to explain to the public what process one goes through for a charter change? Is there supposed to be a public meeting? Is there a certain amount of time so that the public could know what to anticipate in this?
Right, okay. So, there are basically three ways to change your charter. There's the, what's called the charter revision process, and that's really a major change. For example, you wanted to go to a representative form of town meeting, that's a charter revision. You would do that through the election of a Charter Commission, and then they draft the charter, and it goes before the public at a ballot question. Nobody is suggesting that you should go through that process, nor would it be necessary for the kind of changes that we've talked about. And by the way, in November of last year, I did, at the town administrator's request, put together a whole packet of charter interpretation questions that had come up over the years, and with all of the backup, and so that is a good, I think, model. Not that every one of those changes has to be made, but there was things to think about. So, sort of the normal, less significant changes to a charter can be done in one of two ways. The first is through a charter amendment. That requires, that can be initiated by the selectmen, it can be initiated by petition, it goes on the town meeting ballot, excuse me, the town meeting warrant, and it takes a two-thirds vote of town meeting to pass that charter amendment. It then goes through the state review process, and assuming it's approved, it then goes on the ballot at the next annual town election. The second option, which is one that I believe Harwich has followed on a number of occasions, is to do a charter amendment by special act. Again, it requires a town meeting vote, anybody can put it on the ballot, either through the petition process, or the selectmen can do it, the Charter Review Committee could request the selectmen do it. It's in the form of a special act of the legislature, it requires a simple majority vote, and then it goes to the legislature, it's enacted. You've done this before many times, it's a relatively straightforward process, especially for something that's relatively non-controversial. So those are basically the two ways you could go about changing this provision in the charter.
Okay.
I remembered the question.
Okay, I'll get to you, Don, in a second, just-
I was wondering about that list, because I know there are a number, twenty, thirty, whatever they are, questions that have come up over the last couple of years. If we could have a copy of that list, so we can take a look, and I'd also send a copy to Mr. Howell, so he, his group can take a look.
You have that?
And the goal here is not to change the charter, the goal is to just make sure that the language is such that everybody understands it by reading it without having to go to twelve different places. So if you could do that, that I think might be helpful.
You have that, Chris, right?
We have provided that to the board. I think one of the things, when that came out in-
November of two thousand and fourteen.
November of two thousand and fourteen. I think one of the things that, I guess I was looking for a little guidance on, and quite honestly, I don't think this would be something that would be within my purview, but, you know, does the board want, if Coleman and Page has suggested, whatever, fifteen changes, do you want wording changes for all fifteen? Or I thought what would be more efficient use of, quite honestly, you know, a good service, is to go through those fifteen, get a sense for, okay, these five are ones that we should pursue, and then we can pursue the language changes in the charter. I don't know whether it's the selectmen would like to go through that list and do a prioritization, or if Charter Review would like to go through and give a prioritization. I mean, I just, you know, paying the bills, I mean, I would rather get a sense for, you know, which ones do we want to focus on, and which ones, you know, don't need to be focused on.
I suggest maybe we have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Charter Review Committee.
And the Charter Review Committee.
And that would be okay? And sit down, just, let's go through the list. Mr. Howell, you've been very patient, what'd you do to yourself?
I'm going to bring this, that's a story for another day, I'm going to bring this down to ground level here.
Okay, all right.
I just had a couple of comments. I mean, as you all know, that there was no active Charter Review Committee up until December, when it reorganized. I had, and Angelo's absolutely right about our characterization of what we felt our mission was. I had basically operated under the assumption, since I was a selectman, and actually chair of the board, when the last major charter revision occurred, that since it had gotten done going through the general court, and it had been submitted through Copeland and Page, that they would have vetted if there were inconsistencies at that point. So our assumption was, we weren't going to get into that stuff to the extent it said, as otherwise provided by general law or whatever. A couple of things have obviously changed, because hearing not only about this, I mean, there's the town clerk's office, there was the presumption, in talking to the old Charter Commission folks, that it wasn't clear that we were operating in a position with a weak town administrator, and that there were diffuse appointment authorities that were intended when that charter was actually codified. I suspect, and when we sit down with you, that we'd be willing to go through language, as Mr. Giorgio knows, I took a stab at that the last time, and one of the things he omitted is, we got the library article so late in the game that it was impossible for us to follow the track that would be necessary to do a charter revision by ballot, because there has to be a hearing. And you have to report that to the Attorney General. We got it way too late to be able to do a hearing, so as everybody at the table knows, we made no recommendation whatsoever, because we couldn't. We didn't hold a hearing, we weren't in a position to make any kind of recommendation. I took a stab at writing it myself, and frankly, to the extent that these are really important issues, they're not minutia, where there are technical things that need to be rewritten, which is really what we didn't want to get into. Because I have no interest, and I'm sure the committee members have no interest in creating a blueprint for how we really operate, you know, starting on hour one. We were looking more for, if this is more global, I'm sure we'd be willing to tackle that. But with the intention that when you do these things, as you saw when I had drafted it, the way we had always done it is referring to a specific section, paragraph, line, and word for deletion and addition, which is not what's been going on right now when we go to the general court. It essentially defers to the Board of Selectmen to advocate a particular position, and then it goes to the general court through council's office, and written after the fact, after the town meeting actually is approving it. Well, that's what happened with the library trustees. There was absolutely no reference to even what section of the charter was being amended. It just talked to clarifying the-
Don, is there a-
All right, well, the point to this is that we're ready to-
Is there a message that says, by a certain date, if you don't have something, you're out, or you're not going to be included? Is that what I'm hearing?
Last year, we basically decided that in order for us to be able to hold, for major issues, we wanted to hold at least two hearings. And for us to be able to do that, fulfill our obligations under the law, for it to go to the ballot and to make a recommendation at town meeting, I suspect our cutoff would have to be what your cutoff is, somewhere in February. Because it is unlikely that we're going to get the kind of public input that we really want, but we want to solicit it. If town meetings in May, to be able to hold two noticed public meetings, it would probably require February to close that off.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to think that by the end of the calendar year, you know, we can say, okay, if you don't have it in, you know, it's getting late, guys, you know? Let's get, so, I guess that the message is, let's get started earlier rather than later. Now you have a committee in place, right? Are you fully, fully committed on your committee? I mean, you got full complement, right? Okay, so you're all set as far as that goes?
Well, it would be my intention, and actually, I agree with you. I mean, but again, we didn't even get to the point of reforming the committee and holding our first meeting until the middle part of December this past year, making that almost impossible. But that would be a good timetable. If it cut off at the end of the calendar year, that would give us the opportunity to submit, who, Chris, to Copeland and Page, what we intend to actually bring forward to public hearings, which would then be on the, as an article on town meeting, and that's what we'd go with, with the recommendation, based on the hearings.
So if we scheduled, I'll just call it a workshop, you know, with your committee, sometime by the middle of September, would that be, give us all enough time?
Absolutely. And based on what I'm hearing tonight, we have a meeting tomorrow, and that's what I'm going to enjoin the committee to do, is start talking about, okay, what are the areas here where, having read over the Copeland and Page memo, what are the areas where it's unclear, what's the intention of the town to actually operate and start to develop some language? Because that shouldn't be as difficult as the things we were talking about with Angelo, because we were talking within the context of writing a sewage article, which is really, that's more complex than, it's above my pay scale.
That's a new topic, quite frankly, I mean, a whole new topic, you know, so, okay.
But we're ready to actually try to, you know, ferret out those areas and meet with the particular departments that are affected with appointment authority, and see if we can clarify that and have something ready.
Okay. All right, so let's try and set something up by the middle of September and get that going. Could I just ask, John, if this board tonight just wanted to make a statement and say, hey, our interpretation of the charter is that it is strong fire chief, that he has the authority to appoint? Is that enough to get us going, until you clarify language if you want to?
Well-
As opposed to, you know, I appreciate your motion.
Right, well-
I understand, it's technical.
I drafted that because I was asked to draft something, and so that's fine.
We're trying to fix the problem.
Yeah, so I think, you know, that actually has come up before, Peter, with the prior board, where, you know, the, we had given a charter interpretation, and the board really viewed another practice to be more beneficial. I think it had to do with the water waste committee, but don't hold me to that. And, you know, we said at the time, we're not the charter police here. And as somebody said, it's only an opinion of council. So if the board is comfortable with interpreting the charter, based upon the language suggested by Mike, that the fire chief, that the intent was to retain the strong fire chief law, then you can certainly make that statement and have the fire chief continue to appoint firefighters. The only issue would be if somebody disagreed, and it sounds like I might be the only one in the room that would disagree with that, but that doesn't matter, because it's only an opinion. As long as you're comfortable with giving that direction to the fire chief, that would be fine. And then the practice going forward would be, under that interpretation of the charter, the fire chief would simply appoint firefighters.
And would you still recommend change in the language in the charter, just to clarify it?
Well, I mean, I think that's really a question, with all due respect, for the Charter Committee and the selectmen to decide.
Okay, so we'll figure it out on the workshop, maybe.
You know, if you're comfortable with that interpretation of the language contained in the charter, that's fine. My only point was that with something where you had a legislative action, that is, the adoption of the strong chief law back in nineteen, whatever it was, twenty-three or whatever. That's an awfully, awfully long time to have sort of an errant acceptance out there. I mean, it is in your, it is in the code, it's listed in the code as being adopted on that date. You know, I think it's, my general recommendation is to make things clear, not provide for every single eventuality in a charter, charter would have to be this big, it would be unwieldy. But the whole issue of appointments of town employees, officers, firefighters, police chief, police officers, you know, that goes to, I think, it would be good to really look at that as part of this committee review and decide if your current structure is, really makes the most sense. And if you all say, yes, it does, then fine, no amendment is necessary. And believe me, my list was just issues that have come up.
I understand that.
And a lot of them are policy questions, they're not charter interpretation issues.
And I really want to focus on this.
Yeah, so, the short answer to your question is, if the board wants to simply acknowledge that the fire chief has historically appointed firefighters pursuant to the strong chief law, and that there's no need to take any, make any formal delegation at this point, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, Chief Clark.
Mr. Chairman, I've worked for six fire chiefs, and to the best of my knowledge, this has never been an issue. I have reviewed the contracts of previous fire chiefs, and the board has opted to include in the working contract with the fire chief, on the first page referencing forty-eight, forty-two. As I've said you previously, you have, you've instilled in me your confidence in running the fire department. It's, in public safety, it is a different skill set that requires a different evaluation of employees. I think the fire department historically, and certainly I'd like to feel, under my leadership, has been very successful in its appointments. And I don't understand how this has come about. When Mr. Lawton was here, I did some, quite a bit of business with Mr. Lawton, including union negotiations, and this never came up, publicly or privately with Mr. Lawton. union negotiations, and this never came up publicly or privately with Mr. Lawton in regards to the strong chief issue. So, I don't know what his question was or where it was directed, but I can assert that it wasn't directed to me. So, I feel very strongly about this and that historically, yes, it's old, and just because it's old doesn't mean it, it's not in vogue. We have, you have acknowledged this through at least six fire chiefs, I'm the seventh, that this is how you choose to do business, that you instill this confidence in your fire chief, and I hope that you'll continue to do that. Thank you.
I did.
Janelle?
I just simply wanted to say that I think that the contract that the town has with Chief Clark, where it does state, chapter forty-eight, forty-two, is sufficient. I don't think we need to amend the charter at this point.
Chris, did you have...
I just wanted to, you know, from my perspective, you come into a new community, probably similar to what Bob Lawton did, you read the material. Bob Lawton obviously had a question. I have a tremendous amount of respect for Attorney Giorgio. And as an administrator, if I'm in doubt, a lot of times under charter construction, you're supposed to go to the town attorney to get advice for how you move forward. So, you know, that practice of what I've done, you know, in terms of it, is to me just professional practice. Now, whether the interpretation didn't have a good reflection of the history, you know, when you come into a town, you have a year's experience versus, you know, since nineteen twenty-nine, you have different, that, you know, so, I don't want to just have John sit there by himself that, you know, I mean, I think I started this because he wrote an opinion, the opinion was very clear, I think most of the board members that looked at it, he may disagree with how he got there, but at least it was clear. And to the same point, I mean, I've worked in different towns and you try to respect the community that you're in and what the intent of that is, but I don't think there was any maliciousness, certainly not on my part. I get along really well with Chief Clark, I have no issue with him. But I had contrary opinions in terms of what he had kind of told me versus what I had been advised by council. So, I would like, because this does have, you know, a charter element to it, that, you know, I have a role as the town administrator, that at least if the board did have the consensus or however you want to do it, that the interpretation that Mike had given is what the board would like to have followed, then that would at least give me guidance that, okay, that will be the way that I'll follow it, you know, moving forward. But I would like to at least, you know, have the board acknowledge what Mike's intent was moving forward, and then we'll reflect that in the administration.
John?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify one thing. You know, this is, the chief raises a very interesting point that frankly, I was not aware of, because, you know, we don't negotiate employment contracts on behalf of the town. I was unaware that the contract itself provides for, you know, a reference to the strong chief laws, and I think Janelle is correct. With that, in the current contract, that's probably sufficient for the board to simply acknowledge that practice going forward without having to formally vote to delegate that authority.
Okay, Michael, you got it?
Yeah, and I think, you know, with what Chris says, I think if the board takes, I mean, he did give an opinion, he also referenced four-four-two of the charter, which references mass general law. I don't see a need that the board has to take any action on this. If we want to change the charter later, that's the Charter Review Committee. You know, I think the fire chief, if the fire chief wants to add a phrase in there that, you know, recognizes the strong chief position, then that's something they can go before. But, you know, my interpretation, even Attorney Giorgio's opinion, is it refers back to mass general law, and I don't think the board needs to take any action on this.
And...
I guess I'm going to go with Chris on this, that I think that, I think we should make a motion to make it very clear what our intent is, because I think a lot of what we're discussing around this issue, and I bring us back to the library issue that had the professional librarian issue, and that was a three-to-four-year constant discussion until we took a phrase, one word, out of the charter and solved the problem. So, you know, I can just see us, you know, just for a minute, all of a sudden, Chris gets run over by a bus, we end up with a new town administrator, and the town administrator reads the charter, is confused by what the charter says, and we're going to be back here again. So, I mean, I think that it would be very, much stronger for us to say as a board, "This is our intention," because also, even though it is in the contract, the next chief we had, we could take that out of the contract and we're in the same place, discussing whether or not we have a strong chief or a not strong chief. So, to me, I don't see any problem with that amendment that has been proposed, because it makes it very clear what the interpretation, you know, regardless of anybody's intent is. Intentions are wonderful, it's what the factual piece of information is. And if the intentions are thirty years old, let's codify the intention. So, I would say we do this to make it crystal clear what it is we're trying to accomplish, give a crystal clear set of directions to our town administrator, so he's not spinning his wheels, and put the mind at ease of our fire chief. I don't see the big deal here. And then we change the charter if the wording needs to be changed, but if anything, I don't think anybody in this room would argue that if a phrasing is not clear, you fix the phrasing. You don't spend ten years arguing about what the phrasing means or doesn't mean, fix the phrasing.
I'll go back to what I asked, I think, John, before, and that is, you know, if we could, as a motion, if it's as simple as we endorse the concept, or our interpretation is that it is a strong chief concept and that there, that means that the fire chief is responsible for hiring and firing whatever, all the personnel associated with the fire service.
So, my suggestion...
As opposed to, as opposed to section this, section that, section everything else, that's, I mean, that starts to get, you know, Chris writing some kind of memo saying he doesn't do this. If we just, if we just make a statement that says, "We are a strong chief," and that means that the chief does all the hiring-fire in the public, in the fire service, is that that simple?
Yes.
There's no question about it, in my mind, so...
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, why are we doing that when Mr. Clark's contract clearly states that he's a strong chief and it has nothing to do with the charter at all? Because we could change the contract, and then we would have a weak chief. What are we, what are we, what are we making a motion for, though?
Hang on one second.
Could I make just two quick points?
Sure.
You have a contract with the chief, with this chief, so as long as he is chief, you have already voted on his position as a strong chief when you accepted the contract. Secondly, if the world is a better place for having referenced the strong chief law in the charter via amendment, then do it.
Thank you. All right, what's your draw, Angela, did you have a comment?
No, I was just going to agree.
Okay, you're agreeing.
I think instead of having hours and hours of conversation, that we just move forward with the vote, the kind of vote that you suggested, and ask the Charter Change Committee to, with us, however we want to do it, make the change. Because we have spent a lot of time on this, this week and next week, and Don will know over the last ten years, we have had lots of time. This isn't a goal to change the charter, it's just to make sure that it's easier for people to use, that's all. And it's not arguing that the charter's wrong, the charter's fine, it's just...
It's the phrasing.
Somebody have a motion, you want us to consider?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we confirm the interpretation of the charter, that we have a strong fire chief who is responsible for the hiring and firing of the firefighters that are under his jurisdiction.
How about fire service personnel?
Fire service personnel.
Is it perfectly fine? Do you second that motion?
I'll second it.
You second it, okay. Discussion, Michael?
I mean, I think that it'd be appropriate to amend it to refer to chapter forty-eight, section forty-two, so that the legal part of that description is in the motion.
I'll accept that amendment.
Yep.
Angelo?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so you want to reread the amendment, the motion, please, as made?
Let's see if I can remember, remember what I said. I make a motion that we confirm the interpretation of the charter, that we have a strong fire chief who is responsible for the hiring and firing and overall supervision and personnel administration of the fire safety personnel.
Fire service personnel.
Fire service personnel, they are safety people. And pursuant, again, and also pursuant to mass general law.
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight, forty-two.
Okay, and that was your second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, or vote all's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your patience out there, and by the way, thank you for bringing this topic to our attention. Okay, next, I think the last item we had for you was the sewer fee attached to water rates discussion.
Sure.
Welcome to the world of sewer rates and water.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the recommendation of the Water Implementation Committee specifically with re-financing of the sewer, of the comprehensive water quality program. Really quickly, there are basically three mechanisms for financing that were contained in the recommendation. The first is a, a general obligation bond that would be supported by a debt exclusion. And that, I have absolutely no issue with that, that's a common way to finance at all or a part of a sewer system, and I think everyone understands that process pretty, pretty clearly. The second financing mechanism recommended is the adoption by the town of the Water Infrastructure Development Fund. And that is something that I've addressed with the board in the past. It's a, the statute's now about a year old. It allows the town, through a town meeting vote and then a subsequent ballot question, to assess a three percent surcharge on the property tax. It's very similar to the Community Preservation Act, the way that works. The money so collected go into a special fund, not the general fund, and that money can be appropriated at town meeting for any water, wastewater, or stormwater infrastructure improvement.
John, does it have to be three percent, or can it be anything less than up to three percent?
I believe that, the statute talks about three percent, so, yeah. Whereas under the community, now, there are a lot of things about that law that are, are not as clear as they should be. Under the Community Preservation Act, as you know, it's up to three percent. But I believe that statute says three percent, that is the Water Infrastructure Fund. The only, I mean, there's obviously an important policy question for the board to decide whether you want to bring that forward. The only thing I would advise you is that, the way the statute is worded, it requires both a town meeting vote and a ballot question. You cannot do both at, for example, at the two sixteen, two thousand and sixteen annual town meeting and then a week later at the election. There has to be a minimum of thirty-five days between the two votes. So, if you wanted to implement that, you have one of two choices, you could call a special town meeting in the fall, early spring, whatever, and vote the town meeting portion of it, and as long as there's thirty-five days before the, before the election, then you could add that to the, to the, to the election ballot.
Or we could drag our feet and wait here.
Yeah, that's right. The other option is you adopt it at the two thousand and sixteen annual town meeting, and then it would go on the ballot at the two thousand and seventeen annual election. So, that's a decision for you to make, and if you want to take advantage of it sooner rather than later, you'll need to consider a special town meeting.
And so, let me ask you a question on that particular topic, since you, I won't say you're stuck on the three percent, but three percent seems to be the number. There's been some discussion previously about potentially taking CPC and doing some morphing into something that looks like this, you know, that kind of thing, but if you're stuck on three percent, and CPC is three percent, right? That means you've got, according to that, you've got to totally displace CPC, although there's debt service and everything else associated with it, so how would that work?
Well, you can, you can, you can rescind, if you will, the adoption of the CPA, or you can reduce the percentage of the surcharge. There's a whole process that you have to go through in order to do that, and it's basically the same process you went through to adopt the CPA in the first place. You know, it was interesting because some, when you adopted the modified CPA, that subsumed, if you will, the land bank.
Started as a land bank, right, and then worked into a CPC.
Yeah, right, now, the land bank is going to expire, and I think it's in two thousand and twenty, but the CPC will go on indefinitely unless and until you vote either to rescind your acceptance or, as I said, reduce the surcharge, so...
But the land bank part of it has debt service, that's to get paid off.
Yeah, and that's correct, and the same thing is true with the CPA. If you have debt service, you have to continue to pay that debt service until all those CPA bonds are paid off. So, that is, that is a wrinkle, you'd have to talk to your financial advisors about how you would actually do that. Now...
You know, because one concept is if you looked at trying to provide water, oh, excuse me, money for wastewater, but not necessarily raising taxes, if you were to gradually, if you will, over time, you know, get CPC down to here and then replace it, you know, on an upstream level with, with something associated with water, wastewater, then in theory, you know, at some point, you're at three percent and that's it.
Correct. Now, I...
As you say, you just do a new three percent.
Right. Now, I will say that I've spoken to Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services about their interpretation of the infrastructure fund legislation, and they are, they haven't, as to my knowledge, issued any information guidance releases, although they are intending to do so. I haven't seen anything as of yet, so there may be a different interpretation or subtle, not different, but subtleties in the interpretation that DOR would, would have. And so, hopefully, we would get that kind of guidance sooner rather than later. I'm sure we could figure it out in time to do it for next year, if that's what you desired, though.
Well, you're out to, you're out to have, no?
Yeah. So, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Angela.
Oh, there's going to be an election in November, can we put it on that ballot?
I, what is the, what is the election?
This November?
Not this November, November of sixteen.
Yes.
Presidential election.
Yes.
And so, if we brought it to town meeting in May...
Yes, you could, that's...
We could bring it and, you know...
Yeah.
It's a lot, it doesn't take a whole year to get there. It's only a couple of months, we don't have to pay for a special ballot.
That's correct. The only caveat, Angelo, would be that you have to notify the Secretary of State sometime in August, I believe it is. There's a deadline for the submission of local ballot questions on a state election, and that will be a state election. So, you're right, you could do it that way.
But that's August of two thousand and sixteen, right?
That's right.
Correct. So, you could do it at the August two thousand, at the, May two thousand and sixteen annual town meeting, and then add the question on the state election in November.
Save six months.
Yeah, you could.
Okay. Anything else on that topic?
So, then the third option that the committee recommended was, as I understand it, was placing a surcharge on the water rate, which would then be used to, that surcharge money would be used to fund through an enterprise account wastewater infrastructure. And that is the only one of these options that I think needs to be looked at carefully, because as with any fee, and a water rate is a fee, you have to comply with what's known as the Emerson College Test, which is a, an old case in Massachusetts, but it's become the gold standard for how do you determine when a local fee is permissible as opposed to an illegal tax? And there's basically a three-part test for that determination. The first is that the service being provided has to be voluntary, which I think this would pass that test because, you know, you choose to consume town water. You don't necessarily have to, assuming you have another portable water supply. Secondly, the service that's being provided to you, you have to receive a particularized benefit from that service, that's not shared by the entire population as a whole. And then lastly, you can't use it to, to raise general revenue, it has to be related to the purpose for which the fee is charged. So, I get hung up on that second, the particularized benefit prong of the test, because my understanding is that even at full buildout, you're only going to have about fifty percent of the town on sewers, whereas virtually the entire town is on water. So, the question would be, is there a particularized benefit to all the water users by having sewers installed? And I spoke to Dave Young, your wastewater consultant, and we had an interesting discussion about that, and his point, and I think it's a point well taken, is that the water quality improvement through sewers by removing nitrogen is, is a benefit that... is, is an, is a benefit that everyone realizes. It's a little bit far removed, however, from the actual water rate. So, my general recommendation would be if the board is serious about pursuing that, we probably should add to whatever special legislation we're ultimately going to probably have to do for wastewater to add a provision that would expressly authorize the assessment of that surcharge on the water rate. And I think you could do it that way. You know, we've talked about the governance issues, requiring a charter change, however you all decide you want to do that. There are some other provisions that we had included in the special act last year, or at least the proposed special act, that require legislative authorization. So, we might want to add something to that governance special act, just to do it all at once, that would expressly authorize that surcharge on the, on the water rate.
And I think, you know, we voted to include those three potential funding mechanisms. It was a way to move the.
Yep.
Comprehensive wastewater management plan forward, so it gets through the regulatory process and approved with very little specifics. You know, there isn't anything that says we're going to raise rates by this much or, you know, this many cents or whatever. It's just the mechanisms that we would consider. So, I think at this time, we appreciate your guidance on, on that certainly. But as we go forward, we'll certainly delve into it further. But at the moment, that's what's pushing its way through the regulatory process.
Okay, good.
Angela.
I have a question because I think it's a little bit strange. There are two uses of the water bill that are being proposed. One is for everyone, and, and that one it gives, gets used to, to pay for new infrastructure.
Water infrastructure.
Water, wastewater infrastructure. That's what's being proposed. It's, it's using the water bill amount as a way of, of generating.
Funds for wastewater.
Funds for infrastructure of wastewater. And that's for everybody. And then, the second use was for those people who have sewers, you have to charge them for, for the sewer, sewer, searing activity. So, therefore, you go back and you use the water bill rate again because there's logic there. Because if a person brings in 10 gallons of water, they're, in theory, the 10 gallon goes back out. So, there are two, there will be two uses. And I see the, the second use used for the individuals who own septic, not septic, sewer systems to be charged that way. And I think it's done in many, many places. The one I have difficulty with is the first one, and using water to, instead of property taxes, quite frankly, to, to, to charge everybody else. Because I, I don't know how that's going to work. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Right.
Okay. Any else? Any else on that topic?
I have nothing else at this point, so.
You're dismissed. I think we got through all the topics, right?
Yes, I think we did.
Thank you very much.
All right, it was always a pleasure.
And we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Nice to meet you.
Been seeing you. Yep. Let's give you a second, too. Okay, next, we have a presentation, Dave Spitz, on the implementation of, I just call it e-permitting. And I know it's a seller, sounds like the train we're going to take, but it's actually the software package that is associated with this. So, Dave, the board has been curious, you know, when is e-permitting going to come, you know, completely online and da, 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 da?
You've, you've got a two, two-page memo in your packet. And the longer your other topics have been going this evening, the more I've tried to condense what I'm about to tell you. But I'm certainly open to answering any questions. But in this memo, we've tried to tell you where we, how we've gotten to this point today. We pretty much started direct work on designing our form of the Excela software in November of 2013. That's one of a number of bullets on the first page. I'm going to the middle of the second page. After working on this for over a year, go-live took place in May. It would have been much better if it took place in February or March because between a busy permit season, reorganization, and short staffing, we've been challenged. But we're getting the permits out and we're going forward, and we've been addressing issues as they come up. The way the Excela system works is the company provides the software. As I said in the notes, they also provided a project manager who was actually very good and did a lot of work in Chatham. But he had some personal issues, and we ended up not seeing him much. So, the company from California had a partner from Newfoundland, and they all descended on Harwich. And we were assisted very much by, the Cape Cod Commission, who's trying to sort of make this a signature piece, hired a full-time staff person to support the IT efforts. So, that person, combined with the woman from the Newfoundland company, were our basic support in designing and customizing the software to our purposes. If we were going into this as a town by ourselves, it would not have worked to do Excela. We have a one-person IT department, we couldn't have done it. But the company was willing to spend extra time beyond the contract to do the customization that we wanted so that we put in data, we get a form spit out that's exactly how we designed, particularly in health, to a lesser extent in conservation and building. For planning, we don't do output forms, but we have other uses of the system. So, we did a lot of customization, it's required a lot of support, and, and we've done pretty well on that. The reason they were willing to spend the time on that is Cape Cod Commission is trying to get more towns to buy into this. The company is trying to gain more of a presence in Massachusetts. Again, if we were doing it on our own, we should have gone with a simpler system. But we're up and running. Health, building, conservation, and planning are actively using this. The, we have weekly sessions with the employee from the Cape Cod Commission. His weekly Tuesday session is on Wednesday this week, but for the most part, we've been doing that. So, I've listed towards the bottom here, six current issues and needs. These are the things we're actively working on right now, and I'll be glad to answer any questions on those. And I think you all want to know about next steps. So, let me just talk briefly about that.
Well, Dave, just for a second, when you say, you know, within this building, we're actively using the system, it's only for the people that are in this building, is that right?
That's right. The next step will be fire.
Okay, but I, but I guess I'm getting to it's not the public that's using this at this point in time, it's only staff, is that right?
That's correct.
So, so when you're doing your work to process a permit, that's what you're using this for at the moment?
And to retrieve, we do an awful lot of permit information retrieval.
Understand.
That's one of the main things we're trying to get at here.
Okay.
The, our next steps, I've got six here, improve the reliability of the current data entry and output forms. We have made a lot of progress in that, and we still have issues we're dealing with daily. So, we're still working on that. We have to have that in good shape before what they call the citizen access portal is going to be ready to be up and running. We've got to fix our stuff internally first. So, that's going to take some time. Improve current users' knowledge of the system. There's about 12 of us, and I think about, well, I think the large majority of us are already pretty much up to speed. But there's more that has to be learned by the people who are doing it. We want, the next major step we want to take is to extend use to our inspectors, including the fire department. And I'm anticipating that that's going to take from July through September. And I'll, just as a side note, I'm aware of the goals and objectives of this board and that Chris has given to us. And I've taken those into account and putting forward these timelines to you. This one, I don't know, but this could probably happen just about any time. Acquire one or two town hall read-only licenses to allow the assessors department, the town administrator, and any others to view all data and reports. That's in-house for the moment, any town employee. Then, extend read-only ability to the general public. Where does my permit stand? I submitted it to as a bogged-down in conservation, as the planning guy forgetting to look at it, whatever. You know, where does my permit stand? So, this will be the read-only ability. And then, what you folks really want, complete the public interface, allowing users to submit permits electronically. We're suggesting by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, so, could I just ask, either Chris or David, are the funds in place to support this activity that are called the next steps to get this done by June of 2016?
I think primarily the funds have come from the county. So, yes, the answer is yes, not directly by us. We pay a portion, I believe, but.
We pay all of our licenses annually. We've got a budget through Foster to do that. I believe the fire addition is actually coming from Norm's budget, but if that's not the case, we'll talk more about that later.
That was going to be a question I have. He wants $1,200. I, I'm, you know, right, $1,200?
Is that what, yep.
Buying?
I guess we haven't fully resolved that yet.
We'll see the legislature to help me out with this one.
Okay, so, I, I don't.
As strong chief, I think you can just do that, right?
Okay. We are trying to get fire into it, into it next, and I can't answer that part of it.
Okay.
And the other part is the citi, we also, we contributed when we had the system designed. I think our cost of it, and this was through, may have been through the, one of the programs that Cape Cod Commission had covered the cost. But we paid for the design, about 25% of the cost. The Cape Cod Commission paid for about 75% of the, the cost. There was supposed to be a second round of a state grant, which I put in my notes, that they did not get. They were able to cover the cost, they cut it down to just us in Phase Two, Province Town, which is almost ready to go in Phase Three. But the citizen access portal, they picked up the cost entirely. So, as soon as we are ready, we're going to be able to do that.
Okay. Good. Questions for town planner?
Just a curiosity. The implication I get in one of the statements you make is that each of the towns who have gone before us and completed their work have very, very different permitting systems than, than we do. And that we couldn't just take Dennis's or Yarmouth's or whoever's system, make a couple of changes. And so, we changed the, the software to accommodate our system. Did we ever think about maybe there was a way to jiggle some of the things that we were doing?
If we, if we had had a different software, we would have done that. In conservation, there's a standard form at the state level, and we use that. In building, there are some standard state forms that we use and others that we've customized. We've done the most customization in health, they have a variety of permits. So, yeah, we've had the ability to customize, and we've chosen to do so.
I was curious how Newfoundland becomes the center of electronic permitting. I don't know how that happens, but.
Well, we lost a month this weather, this winter, due to weather, so. Or connect, connect plane connections.
And I assume, Dave, along the way, you're at some point interfacing or in periods of time interfacing with the folks in Chatham and Yarmouth, the folks that are also struggling with doing this because, you know, I hear different things from different people about how effective it is and who the lead dogs are, Yarmouth and Chatham, I think, are the lead dogs.
We are, we're extensively interacting with Yarmouth. We think that's the role model that's worth us following.
Okay. All right. And could I just ask that, you know, you have some, some timeframes on here. Throughout the year, could we just get an update, you know, it says, you know, extend read-only ability to the general public by the end of 2015? Could we just be updated when that happens?
I was going to include that, that was one of my goals and objectives. So, I'll include that in the quarterly or whatever the timeline is from my suggestion.
Just so we keep it in front of ourselves. Okay? Anything else? Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, next, Facilities and Maintenance Overview, Sean Libby and Lincoln Hooper. Welcome, gentlemen.
You must be referring to you, Sean. All right, good evening. Link Hooper, DPW Director. Some of you may realize that establishing a facilities maintenance position was a Board of Selectmen goal beginning in 2008. Funding that position took four years to see through fruition. Once it was funded, since it was a new position and an important position, the board decided that they wanted to help develop the job description. That took, that process included Mr. Hughes, representing the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, and myself. And we had several spirited discussions over this. Peter described that at a later board meeting, that everyone walked away from that table being aggrieved. So, he thought it was an excellent compromise, and I echo those sentiments. Then, we went to the street and advertised. We garnished five applicants, none of which met the minimum job requirements. We had another meeting, we decided to adjust some of those requirements, got another couple of applications. And then, I think we had a total of eight applications. We decided to, our, the interview committee that I assembled decided to interview five applicants, of which Mr. Libby was one. There was only two applicants worthy of consideration. And during the actual interview, the formal interview, the other applicant said, this is great, it looks like I'd be a fit, but I couldn't possibly work for that advertised money. Which kind of shocked me, I didn't realize why apply for it, go through that process, and then say I needed another $20,000 to take that position. I did realize that money was extremely tight, that this position was funded about 30% below market value. Mr. Libby, during the interview process, absolutely knocked our socks off. He was a clear front-wonner, never asked about money. Once he was on board a couple of months, I had a frank discussion with him and asked, and asked him why he chose to join the HCPW and our team. And he confided in me that he was looking for a new challenge. He was somewhat bored from being a retired Navy veteran of 30 years. And more importantly, he was looking for some camaraderie that he missed from the service. And he thought during the interview process with us that he found that. I think he would still say that today, hopefully, that he, he feels he made a decent decision with that. I stand before you in saying that I am completely enamored with Sean's performance. He, I, I think most of the department heads that have jurisdiction over buildings would echo those sentiments. And I feel confident that once you get to know Mr. Libby, his work product, and see what he's able to do if we get him the appropriate resources, that you would feel the same way as I do. And with that, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Libby.
Thank you, Link. Sean, welcome.
Thank you. And thanks, Link, for advertising, I'm a cheap worker, so.
Yeah, it's good, wasn't it? That's really good.
I'd like to thank the board for asking me to come here and give this presentation because hopefully it will give you an idea of what I've been through. And hopefully, you know, as I gave you in the bullets of my presentation here, tell you a little bit about what I walked into, where I'd like to see this go to, and the obstacles that I foresee, you know, right in front of me right now. Before I do that, you know, my definitions of maintenance, just so you all understand where I'm coming from, y'all is a southern thing. I was in the Navy and stationed down south for a long time, so. You have breakdown maintenance, known as our service calls. That's when our department heads will call and say, hey, our light's out, or, you know, something's broken. That is primarily how the town is operated. And breakdown maintenance is a great thing for a short period of time because it's cheap, doesn't require a lot of labor. But I think as the board saw a few years ago, I forget what year you said that link was, but breakdown maintenance is not sustainable because of the costs that will be incurred later. Next, you'll have your small projects. That type of maintenance is, you know, you want to make a renovation or a small thing happen within the town or the town facilities. And then, you have the most important one, which has not been touched in this town, as far as I can see, except by contractors that we pay a lot of money to do, and that's preventative maintenance. Ideally, you should have 80% of your time spent on preventive maintenance. I would say right now, we spend maybe less than 10. And that's a sad state. So, that's why I say in the future, I'd like to see us move towards doing something a little bit more. In order to do this, the first thing I asked was, when I got hired, give me a list of the buildings so I'll know how many facilities. Came up empty. So, I had, that's where I started with nothing. I got the list of facilities from our MIA report, started going to each one of these, went around. And later on, eight months later, I'm still finding, oh, I'm responsible for this as well. So, things crop up that are not even on the MIA report that should be maintained. After I got through with these reviews, I started taking inventory of all the buildings and the equipment within it. And I started researching a CMS, CMMS program, which will help me identify when things are due so we can do it proactively, plan things out. We recently purchased, starting in July, a new CMS program and been starting to enter all the data in of all that I've been gathering for the last year and a half. That data is all-inclusive of the equipment and the maintenance requirements within it, and then the maintenance schedule for that. So, predictively, we can have a schedule that will pop up. And in the calendar, I can say what's due in the next week and plan out our work around our breakdown calls. That, that is absolutely my goal for the future, is to be working off of that primarily. That is absolutely my goal for the future, is to be working off of that primarily. However, as I work into my issues, the obstacles I have, manpower is one, I've got a force of two, three including myself. As you look through any kind of internet on maintenance manpower requirements, and you look at the square footage that the town has, the square footage of usable space, it ranges anywhere from six to nine technicians. Not helpers, but technicians, people with licenses that go out and do these things. I know that's not gonna happen. I know that last year, when we looked at increased services, I asked for two additional people, so a crew of five, I think, could manage this. But with three people going through and doing assessments and trying to do maintenance, we will never get ahead in the preventive maintenance, we'll always be doing breakdown maintenance. The other issue that I'd like to bring up, you know, just so you get an idea of what three people are doing, the first three weeks that we started using this system, we had 51 service calls for three people to take care of. That's 51 items of breakdown maintenance for three people to go out in 15 days. That's the type of workload that we're facing. One other obstacle, and that's just trying to understand the funding, and the way the funding is done within the town, for maintenance items, historically and currently, the department heads manage their own funds. While that has worked in the past, what is not foreseen is anything that you could get of moving funds to take care of higher priority items, something that I'm used to within the public works departments that I worked in for the Navy. The reason you wanna have that is, if there's an excess amount of money that was not used in one department, and you have an emergent item that's gonna be costly, you can shift money and use that in that department. There is no avenue, other than going to the finance committee and say, "Fincom, I need money for this." And sometimes you don't have the time, and I'll give a perfect example with the fire department, last week, we had the water heater let go. After 20 years, the center of it just rotted out, water was going, he has no hot water. They came back with an estimate of $12,000 to replace his commercial water heater. That will wipe out half his maintenance budget in one call. So without having the time to look around and say, "How can I shift money?", I'm trying to find a cheaper way to do it, so we can do it within there, using electric instead of gas, because if we go gas, it's gonna be up there. So those are my obstacles, and that's probably my biggest, my biggest problem, is whenever I run across something that's under, you know, the $50,000 threshold for capital, and I wanna get something done, I can't either without going forward through a special project through Fincom, or if it can wait, go into town meeting with an article. So with that, that's my presentation, that's where I'm at. My goals is to get towards preventive maintenance, as I said. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Janelle?
I have a quick question. Are there three full-time, year-round maintenance staff, people, including yourself?
Yes, three, including myself, and when you add that up, that's roughly 630 man-days, and you take away 65 of those days for vacation and sick, and then you also look at the fact that when it snows, we're doing snow and ice as well, so an average of 10 days for all three of us. That's a lot of days we spend doing other things in maintenance, so that even reduces our staff that much more. When you have three, any one day can really impact, make an impact.
Recently, I met an intern who was driving around in the truck with Wes Langway.
Yes.
What is his position?
He is an intern, he works for Mass Merit, he actually goes to school at Mass Maritime, and for eight weeks, he's doing an internship here. That's me taking advantage of a program Link brought back to me last year, he said, "Do you have any use for this?" I said, "Oh, yes, I do."
So we don't pay him? He earns college credit?
No, he does, he gets, he has to actually pay to work for us, and we pay him the $11 an hour we pay for a summer hire. Unfortunately, it's only eight weeks, so I'm taking advantage of that every way I can.
He was very nice.
Thank you.
Anything else? You know, you didn't touch, Sean, on the spreadsheet you provided us, which is in a packet, which goes from FY '16 to '22, as a snapshot on things you know, I think that need to get replaced or fixed or whatever, right?
Correct.
And I guess one comment is, you know, if I look at FY, the current year we're in, 2016, you know, we're gonna spend about $570,000 on those items. Some were articles, I think some were in budgets, you know, whatever. And then next year in FY '17, you're projecting about $190,000. I'm sure there'll be some items that get added to that as we go through the year, I would guess, that that would get itself up there. I'm just sort of wondering if, you know, realistically, are we looking more like a number that should be closer to $500,000 a year, as opposed to jumping up and down from, you know, $570,000 down to $190,000 to $112?
The reason it's so high that first year is those are the emergent items that I noticed talking to the department heads. These are things that have waited years for somebody to make a decision, I think, and I said, "These things need to get done, or it's gonna be more costly in the future."
Yeah, I understand, and, you know, quite frankly, we took the town meeting, you know, like Fire Station One, you know, the main Fire Station roof.
Absolutely, we have a number of the items.
Yeah, yeah, all those things, so. Okay. Keep it up, I know it's hard with three people, I know it's not exactly what you expected, but we certainly appreciate, you know, everything you've done. I can say that, you know, the department heads that I talked to, the feedback is great as to, you know, how cooperative your guys are, and how willing they are to do whatever they can do within their, you know, within their resources and whatnot to help out, and, you know, it's hard, you're in essence running a little version of a fire department, you know, or EMS that, you know, people call up and they say, "Well, how come you're not here in 20 minutes, you know, how come you're not here in 10? How come you have to wait three months to get something done?" You know, that type of thing. We understand and appreciate that, but we know you're making a good effort, and the feedback has been very positive, so very positive, so, and I think everybody appreciates the fact, although if we look at your time that you spent, we'd say, "Boy, it'd be better, you know, we could have that guy doing more work as far as planning and those kinds of things." But we also know you're getting your hands dirty, and you're diving right into it, because you know you need to.
Absolutely.
So we certainly appreciate that. Linda?
If you had your druthers, and you had the open pocketbook, what would you wanna hire at this point in the FY '17, this '16 budget?
I would go back to what, when Chris asked for increased services, I asked for one plumber and one electrician. That would allow us not only to take care of the emergent items that we've paid for in the past, as I put forth, roughly, we spent $26,000 on each last year, but it would allow us to do that preventive maintenance in those fields, and, you know, it would save us money as well.
Anything else? Thank you, Sean. Thank your team, by the way, Tom, we really appreciate what you do.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Link, for finding him, despite this going on.
I told him, "Don't leave yet."
Oh.
Hi, I'm Ginny Hewitt from the library, and I would like to say, "You see, before you were a sane person," which several years ago was pretty touch and go, because the maintenance, building maintenance responsibility was so overwhelming. That's because I took it seriously, I didn't just accept a contractor's recommendation, I would research myself, I didn't waste money on solutions that really didn't solve the problem. So, but it was at a great personal toll, so I was at one of, I mean, I was one of the major advocates for this position, and we were very fortunate to get Sean. We just finished this major carpentry project, and the results are excellent, without Sean's involvement, that wouldn't have happened. We would've gotten it done, but without the same quality or the value for the taxpayers' investment. So I just wanted to tell you some of the things that, like right now, our electrical issues, we've got some major issues going on. For the past 18 months, we've had dimming, brightening, and flickering lights, anytime there's moisture outside. It's crazy, flickering, it's not like strobe lights, it's all wildly different, it's, you know, you have to see it to experience it. But anyway, it's, no one could, you know, different companies, no one can figure it out. We did some repairs to a main lighting panel on the first floor, N-Star came out twice, checked the neutral, you know, and then we'd still have the problems. We replaced the, is it legs, legs to the main panels? Okay. Which were corroded. Their water is coming from the electrical pole outside, and down into the conduit, into the basement where the main panel is located. So those were replaced. Since November, Sean's been trying to get a quote from this commercial electrical company that we've worked with for years, to replace the conduit, can't get the quote. We almost turned back $18,000 this year in fiscal '15, despite that this much needed work really needs to get done. Water and electricity don't mix, I mean, you know, not an engineer, but I do know that. So fortunately, on June 29th, one of the companies Sean's been hounding came and, you know, reviewed the work, and we got a quote on June 30th, so we have the funds encumbered. But we have other major, major electrical work. I could list the projects, but we need lights added in two places, you know, we've had people come, they say they'll give us a quote, they don't give you the quote. There's a row of lights out in the reference stacks that have been docked for, I don't know, six to 12 months. Highways has already looked at it, you know, we need an electrician at this point, we've got exterior lights that are not working, you know, a lot of things like this. So when they tell you that there's $26,000 was spent last year, some of these things we've been trying to do for two years and haven't gotten done, so that's only what was spent, that's not the need for what should be done. There's other major issues, I, you know, you probably have heard me over the years, we've got HVAC issues, there's a number of issues of those, we've had leaks in different areas that may or may not be fixed, you know, all kinds of things. So anyway, as awesome as it is to have Sean, I'm still spending a significant amount of my time on maintenance. It's awesome, because I, there's a partnership there, and so I feel like I'm not alone, and it's transitioning to Sean, as, you know, new projects come up, and he's, now he's got some history with the different systems. But the funds are still in the department budget, and I think it really needs to be centralized, and that responsibility needs to be centralized. And Sean really needs the administrative help, and more workers. I've heard a lot of people, town officials and just townspeople, talking, "Well, we've hired a maintenance manager like Dunn accomplished," and that's not the case. He needs help, and I, and I think, for one, the administrative help is really important, and it's easy to overlook that. But it's hard for people that haven't experienced this to understand how you cannot get a contractor to come and do the work. It's extremely frustrating, and although I'm glad to say Sean's experience is the same as mine, it's, you know, wasn't, if he would've started having them come right away, I would've been a little upset, why didn't they come when I called them? But anyway, it sounds ridiculous, but it's true, it takes multiple calls. You have to hound, beg, plead to try to get people to come. When they come, then they tell you they'll give you a quote. Then you gotta start hounding them to get the quote. If you get the quote, you approve the work, and now you have to follow up and try to get them to come and schedule and do it. So it, it's, I don't know why that is, I don't know if it's peculiar to the Cape, a lot of the work that we need is like commercial electricians, commercial HVAC, and there's not a lot of that. And obviously, they're in demand, and they don't need the money, so they're not taking the time for the things that need the troubleshooting, you know, or would take more time. So anyway, I think this is a start, but Sean needs help, the administrative help and the workers. And I'm sorry you only had 51 calls in early July, because we were leaving you alone.
All right, thank you. Link, do you have a wrap-up here?
Yeah, briefly, Ginny took most of the wind out of my sails. Bar none, there was no more strenuous support for this position than Ms. Hewitt. I mean, she got up at numerous town meetings and spoke on behalf of funding this position, and thank you for that, Ginny. The administrative staff is an important component, we're starting to centralize. We went through centralizing vehicle maintenance back eight years ago, I think that's worked out very wonderfully. The increased administrative load on my staff was unforeseen by myself at that point, and we processed probably more bills than the rest of the town combined, probably simply because of that. And I could see that's another component, once this does get truly centralized, the administrative staff is an important component. Lastly, it wasn't just me, Peter, I assembled a team of five people for the interview process. Thank you.
Janelle, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So Ginny made reference to a number of issues over at the library, which are not on the spreadsheet that Sean presented. So my question really is about, what did you call it, breakdown maintenance? Should there be a line item for breakdown maintenance here? Because it sounds like some of these issues that Ginny spoke of are probably gonna be in the multiple thousands of dollars, and they're not listed at all.
What you have is last year's capital outlay plan, that's what I presented last summer.
Okay.
It has not been updated, that is a presentation from last year. The electrical that she's talking about is service calls. It is, it's new requirements, either it's service calls of a light is out, or it is a small project as, "Let's install three lights on this wall." That's the type of things that she's bringing up. Those are maintenance items that need to come from a maintenance budget, and right now, currently, that resides in each one of the departments, and they know how much they can spend every year.
And another question I have is contractors, you're having a hard time with contractors. Is there any possible way to utilize Cape Cod tech?
I have not tried, I could look into it. I have heard of John, who I work with, has tried in other things, and just not responsive as far as the timeliness that the department heads would like, but that's certainly something I could look at.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Janelle, I just wanted to say, I think with a tech school, a lot of the things, well, like fixing some of the lights, you know, individual fixtures, may be something the tech school could do. A lot of this is, you're talking about more complex building systems, and I don't think they're at that stage, not to say they couldn't come in for some planned project, but how I budget for maintenance when I submit the request is, we have preventive maintenance contract on every building system, and that's what Sean's talking about, you're paying outside people, where if we had some people, it would cost us less. And they would also be familiar, be the same people, instead of different technicians coming different times, you know, from the same company. But, and then I budget the average of the last three years repairs, so if we had, you know, $8,000 or $10,000 on, you know, a major HVAC problem, the next year, I don't use that high estimate, I average it out, and, you know, it's always a juggling during the year, but usually if, you know, whatever was bad last year is in better shape, you know, not as many issues, and the higher areas come somewhere else, so, you know, you have to juggle it. But I do look at that, and I don't know if it's done that way town-wide, but I feel like we try to forecast as best we can, but what is great about having Sean, and will be improved in the future, if, you know, X happened this year, I don't know what that means, okay, Y's gonna happen next year. Or, and I don't know about the building, you know, the, I know about issues that have occurred and not other issues, I can't anticipate other things. So it's great to have that expertise, but he's so limited in his time. And I think it's not all carpentry and things, it's really complex building systems, and that's what we, I think we could use some of that expertise in-house, and it would benefit the town and be cheaper in the long run.
Yeah, as these systems get more and more complex, it's more and more of a challenge, there's no doubt about it. And sometimes we think, when we're building these things, it all sounds great, we're gonna get this and that. If you look at the complete life-size of the cost, and really put in what it takes to maintain these things, you may have a different story, you know, and Sean's shaking his head up there. Chris?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, you know, it is a lot more high-tech, we actually just did an adjustment to my thermostat in my office, and he was able to read how that adjustment worked, so building maintenance is a lot more complex now than it has been in the past. One thing that we wanted to try to do last year, unfortunately, we had such turnover in the accounting department and in the treasurer's office, that we didn't get a chance to do it. We did do it to a degree in the community development department, we kinda merged some of the line items together to give the departments more flexibility. And one of the things that I'd really like to work on this year is with Link and with Sean, to see if we can talk some of the departments into merging into kinda one area. As you saw, when Sean said, "When a big issue comes up, it's nice to have the resources to be able to tackle it." And I think if we could do some consolidation this year, I was planning on doing it last year, but just with the staff turnover, we decided not to, it was just too much, all things considered. But we will reengage in that discussion, and see if we can get him some resources, so he has the ability to be able to do more with the, with the resources being pooled.
Look forward to hearing about it. Thanks. Thanks again. Okay, next, you have a presentation on community center catering services, let me just give you, we're gonna eat?
We're getting cake.
Wow. Let me just, let me just introduce the topic a little bit.
Those look like brownies.
Wow. Something else. There you go, did it leave a tip?
Come on, it's healthy.
Thank you.
So- So let me introduce the topic by saying a couple of weeks ago, maybe it's a month ago now, I don't remember, but Hugh Drummond, who's here on his birthday. Thank you very much, Hugh, for coming. I think I would just say, Hugh, lightly, that you discovered the fact that we actually have these parties at the Community Center and you raised some questions and issues, which, you know, that's a good thing to get.
Thank you.
And we wanted to bring that topic forward tonight so that everybody, you know, we could put it on the table and talk about it. These party packages, Carolyn could tell you, but I think they've been going on for a while, but a lot of people don't know that these things happen and we appreciate the fact that you brought this to light. And we want to hear.
It's my birthday, but I didn't get any cake.
No.
Happy birthday. We won't ask how old, but that's okay. Chris, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce the topic a little bit. Last year, we had, when I started, I realized that we had a chef and I'm like, oh, what's a good way to utilize the chef services? Not only did we have a chef, but it was kind of fully funded by taxpayer dollars. So I challenged the assistant and Carolyn and Barbara Ann to see, you know, is there a better way to do this? This was presented to the board and I do recognize that when we presented it, we said, well, here's a concept. Let's see how it works. And when we presented it last year, we presented it with the concept, well, we want to make sure we break even. We don't want to lose money in any of these ventures. But we thought that there was an opportunity that if someone came in and wanted to rent a room, that why not have the option available to them to then be able to have the service, have some food provided to it? So I do applaud the two ladies, at the time, I guess the three ladies, because we had also Julie in the office that put this together. And one of the things that I appreciate, and I didn't initially appreciate, but I do appreciate now, that I utilize the service myself. And a question came up that, you know, were we breaking even? And I realized that we had not carefully looked to see if we were breaking even. The good news is we came really close to breaking even. The bad news is we realized we weren't covering everything. We had left a few things that needed to have some adjustment. So tonight, there is a recommendation too, to adjust the fee structure so that we will cover the cost for this. But I thought that it was important that when we went down and said to the board originally, we wanted to offer this service and we wanted to have it break even and not be a drain to the taxpayer, that we basically almost accomplished that, but we didn't realize that we needed to do some adjustments. And some of that was we wanted to have a certain dollar value to make it easier on people that when they came, they'd have an easy mechanism to be able to sign up. And I think when we did that, we kind of put in lesser amounts than we realized that we actually need now that we have a year under our belt. So there is a recommendation to increase the fee to make sure that, I'm very, very confident. And we did have Andy included in the conversation to help us go through to make sure that we would break even this year. So I just wanted to kind of put things in context that last year was kind of a concept to look at it and I think it's been successful, but I want to give the two ladies an opportunity to go over the program and what it is and the work that's gone into it.
Are we in fact having Hugh's birthday party over there after this meeting? Could be a surprise, you know. So who's going to speak on this? Barbara Ann?
I think we both can a little bit. So in front of you and in back of me is zucchini bread. And the zucchini is fresh from Foster Banford's Gardens. He had baseball bats that he donated to us. Literally zucchini baseball bats. They were humongous. And Linda doing her magic as she always does, made them into wonderful different kinds of things, from muffins to bread to soup to, you name it. So that's what you're eating tonight. So basically, what we wanted to do is in addition to offering the dining programs that we have, our supper club and our senior dining lunch program, we wanted, Carolyn and I had been talking about trying to put together a sort of one-stop shopping is the best way to put it. So we always have had that concept in the council on aging. You come in, you have fuel assistance, you have food stamps and that kind of package, if you will. And you also can go to exercise class and have fun. So everything encompassing for senior, hopefully you can get at the community center. So we thought, well, why not do that with food? If you're coming and you're having a meeting with a business group or fill in the blank and you're going to rent one of our rooms, why not offer coffee and tea and muffins or something like that when we've got the chef in the building anyway? So that's sort of where the concept came from and how it started. And so a year ago, as Chris Clark said, we started with the birthday package flyer that Carolyn and Sam so nicely did up. And we've grown a little bit. Carolyn can tell you about the other brochures. But what I want to tell you is on the chart that you were given, we actually really ended on 6.6. So the only difference that we had was $32.04, which I don't think is really bad considering we weren't sure exactly how to, you know, if the math was going to work out with Linda's salary. So after talking with Andy and Chris, what we're going to do is add 30% to the salary automatically so that we don't have to do this up-down-up thing if somebody is, you know, 37 hours of Linda's time. You know, it's the 37th hour, I should say, or the 41st hour. It'll just be a 30% amount added to this year. And that will cover the Medicare and the workers' comp and all of the fun stuff that we didn't look at as closely as we could have, I guess, this year.
So just to clarify, you're talking about the council on aging catering spreadsheet?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I know you had a lot of papers in front of you. Sorry.
And so if I look at this, I'm not going to count, but it looks like you had a dozen or so events. Is that about right?
That's about right, yes. And so what we do is when customer X comes in, we give them an approximate number of hours that it'll take to do your function and an amount, a dollar per person figure of what we're going to charge you for feeding, whatever number you give us. So if you have a graduation party, you might tell us there's 30 kids. Or if you have a birthday party, you might tell us there's 10 kids. Whatever number you give us, we will multiply that through based on the menu that you choose. We have menus that you have in front of you. We also can do additional things to that. We couldn't put absolutely every single thing we can offer on paper or it would be a ream of paper. So we did do approximately a dozen and all of the customers that we worked with were very satisfied. As you know, one of the ways that we do get a little bit of money back is when we use the emergency management. When Linda does work for them, if we are declared a, like Juno, storm through MEMA or FEMA, we do get money back and that goes back into the general fund for her time and for food. So it is used for departments. It's also used with Anita Doucette's, with election workers and that kind of thing, in addition to the outside public.
Okay, and could I just ask?
Of course.
Can, this is available for town residents and non-residents or anybody who wants to use the facility, right?
Anybody who comes in to use the facility that, you know, would normally rent a room can tack these other pieces on or not.
Right. So if someone's, I'm making this up, if someone's visiting in the summer and they said, oh, I'm here this weekend. By the way, my 15-year-old's having a birthday party or wants to have a birthday party, they could come to you and, you know, have this available to them, right?
Yes. We do that basically as a tag team. Carolyn's the room end of things and potentially gym end of things and we're the food end.
Okay, and could I just ask, because you said it on more than one occasion, I just used the phrase, since we have a chef in the house anyhow, would you just explain that program, not this one, but the fact that we do have, I mean, I think it's well-known, maybe not so well as I think.
We do. And going back to when Mr. Hughes was here, your first go-around, I think, back with Peter Luddy, et cetera. We've had many iterations of a food program in our department. We do feed approximately 30 seniors or thereabout a day. And in the lunch program, it's a nutritious meal, approximately 11:30 Tuesdays through Fridays. And then on Monday nights, instead of having lunch, we have a supper club. That began for a whole nother reason of widows who were all alone. And in Harwich, I think it was '07 or '08, we had a very sad horrific suicide of a gentleman who in his note had said he could not bear to have one more supper, quote unquote, alone. So we decided, not on my watch. We're going to try and do something to allow people to come together and have supper. And about two weeks ago, we had 55 for supper. It just varies on the meal, varies on the entertainment and sometimes varies on the weather. So Tuesday through Friday is lunch and on Monday nights is supper club. Tuesday through Friday is a $3 donation and supper club is a $5 donation. Cover what you were looking for?
Yeah, no, that's good. Okay. Questions from the board?
I have a few questions.
Certainly.
From what I understand, the intent of the community center was never to make a profit. Is that true?
Mm-hmm.
But at least to break even as Chris has said. So my question is about the room use fees and the party packages. Why such a huge discrepancy for the same rooms?
That's a Carolyn question.
Tag me in. Just kidding. As you can see, we did, we looked at, I think it's included in your package, we looked at the surrounding towns and what other people were charging for the party experience. We also looked at businesses because we knew that there were businesses that were charging much greater. One of the things that the community center has always said is that we'd like to provide services. So this is much less expensive than going to a business, a YMCA, some of the other.
My business.
Another business.
$250 for a party at my business. So I know.
They should go because you have a lovely business. Everyone has businesses. But this is just another different experience. It's a, you know, if you go into the community center, although lovely, it's a different experience. It's not a, we don't have jumping balls and things like that. It's a very different experience. So the difference in the price is that when the community center was established, it was established for nonprofit groups, which is why you'll see the different brochures that clearly state nonprofit group prices.
But they don't have to be a 501(c)(3). I can go in there and rent a room for $35, correct? Because I'm a nonprofit, I'm not doing it for profit?
Well, are you trying to run a business out of there? Then we would, you would go before the facilities committee. I think this is what we were talking about at the facilities committee. You go in front of them. So if you were just coming in and you wanted to do your little book club with seven people, that's a very different thing than running a business out of, you cannot run a business out of the community center.
I guess my point is, what would preclude somebody from saying, hey, I want to rent that room for a single use for $35 and, you know, I'm just going to have it for personal use. I'm not charging anybody anything. Why couldn't I, as a consumer, have a birthday party in it instead of paying $100?
Because I'm right here and I'd go right inside that room and say, oh, hi, are you having a birthday party? We ask you and you fill out a form as to what you're doing inside the room. And that's what our job is, is to make sure we know what is happening inside the room at all times. And we have people that are monitoring it and that I think that the brochure says there is a monitor included. So there is somebody, whether it's myself who comes in or, you know, if Eric happens to be in the building who is also part of this as well. So there is always somebody who is checking to make sure. You know, we need to make sure there's no candles being lit. We have different criteria than another building would. So that's how we know, because we have a form that you're filling out and there's one of us always happily making sure that your experience at the community center is a good one, but safe and meeting all the requirements.
I guess, I think you know that I think the charges for the activity rooms should be more, personally, because I know people do run businesses out of there. And like, for instance, the yearly fee for, it's $150. You get 104 uses. That's very, very, very short money. So I'm just questioning, when somebody does come in and say they want to sign up for the yearly use, the yearly fee for $150 for one of those rooms, let's for instance, say NA. I know NA is in there one night a week. What if they wanted to have a birthday party for one of their members? You know, I mean, the discrepancy in the money seems like the town, the community center could be making more money off of these fees. And I know that, you know, Lee Culver told me, no, we don't want to be a profit-making machine. I get that. But at the same time, the town doesn't want to lose money and not break even on things. So you see what I'm saying?
I do. And I'm going to be honest, I do not crash into some of the meetings that are going on. I'm not going to do that. That's just not what we're about in the town of Harwich, I don't believe. I think that if somebody brought a cake in for somebody in a meeting, that's very different than somebody having a birthday party. And that's my own personal feeling. And if the board feels differently, I'll be glad to now check each and every room if that's what we're now talking about. But I thought we were talking about birthday party packages, but.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to at all be defensive, but I just think that the discrepancy in the pricing is huge. So when somebody comes in and says, okay, I want to use that room for $35, is there something that says you may not have a party in here?
Well, yes, if they're renting it, they're renting it as a nonprofit. They're doing it for this.
But they don't have to have a 501(c)(3) is what I was, right? Like, I can come in there. I'm not coming in as a business, coming in as a person because I want to have a meeting or whatever I want to do in there. On that piece of paper that I am signing up to do, does it say you may not have a birthday party? And I'm not trying to be difficult, Carolyn, but it's logistics.
I guess the question becomes, can someone bring their own birthday stuff in and do it in a room versus providing the birthday party service that you are? And I would say this, that if you have a so-called party, birthday party, it seems to me, if nothing more, the cleanup afterwards has to be more than someone renting a room for a book club. I'm just guessing.
I would agree wholeheartedly with you, Mr. Hughes.
But do you allow people to bring their own food in? I guess that's the question.
The Board of Health has very strict regulations on people bringing in food. I certainly could have brought them, but I didn't know that. I'll be happy, actually, if they're still there, I can run over and get them from Paula.
No, no, but somebody is.
But they don't do potluck. You can't, that's against the rules of.
Okay.
I know Brownies had a cooking class one time when my daughter was there in the room. So if they were to do something with cooking, they'd meet weekly or bi-weekly. Did they have to?
Couldn't have cooked in the room because there's no cooking utensil. There's nothing to cook.
I don't, they did cold food prep. They did.
Sure, like marshmallows and things like that. I'm absolutely sure they could do things like that, sure.
It was like cold food prep salads and veggies and it was a healthy eating thing. But I don't mean any disrespect. I feel like you're taking offense to what I'm saying. I just am questioning the discrepancy. And if there are particular rules for each of these events that take place, if there's a form that the people fill out and, you know, if there's something listed that says you can or can't do this if you're renting as a nonprofit group versus if you're renting for a birthday party. Because what is it? It's $65 difference. You could rent three times for this, you see? I'm just looking at it from a consumer perspective.
So if you'd like, I'll be more than happy to go set up some logistics on what exactly can happen inside a room.
So we want to charge more to the Brownies? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm hearing, Mr. Hughes.
I understand that. I mean, it's a.
I'm happy to do that. I'm sure they'll be very happy with that.
That's an organization that I'd almost think would do for free, but, you know, that's just me.
I'm happy to do that. Not at all what I'm saying.
Mr. Gunnerson, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Have you had a party there?
No.
Okay.
I'm going to try a Grinch situation. I wanted to raise a few observations on this and see where it goes. The, I'm all for using the vacant space or unreserved space in the community center and I think how you charge for it is one issue. But my objection or suggestions focus around the food service. The examples used in the packet you have of other community centers, there's only one of those three that serves food. And that is through a contract, a contractor, a company. That company, I believe, is called the Casual Gourmet in the Hyannis option there. And they also serve or have food services that they do for the Cape Cod Hospital and the Heritage Museum. So in that particular case, that municipality has hired or outsourced the restaurant services. There are no municipal employees or food service costs associated with that goodie part. That's a nice. employees or food service costs associated with that goodie part. That, that's a nice extra service. But my suggestion would be that we use the existing catering services that are small businesses in and around Harwich and other restaurants that have just started up, such as Red's and others, Brax, that's been there for years. But these services could very well cater to these party functions without using Harwich employees. Now, just to throw another issue out on the table, we just listened to a very impassioned plea for more maintenance for buildings. And now we're talking about a catering service for parties where we're using town money to pay for an employee of the town to do the cooking. I'm sorry, it's a pretty easy decision for me which way I'd go with the priority of how I spend that money. So anyway, my suggestion would be that the community center could go forward with the general concept of providing food services, but that they should be looking at working with two or three local restaurants that I just mentioned, the Mason Jar, Ruggies, Brax, or the pizza place Red's down the street. And they could come up with a, a series of menu items and a recommendation to go talk to them if you want to run a party. They would cater it, bring it in, clean it up, and you wouldn't have to worry about using existing town employees. Just a thought. The other thing, for what it's worth, is if you're going to go forward with this, the number that has been bantered around before for benefits of employees, and I know when we put the budget together this past winter and leading up to the annual meeting, we were looking at something close to twenty-one thousand dollars a year, up to that amount, for health insurance per employee. I know you had that in your charts, Chris, for firefighters, EMTs, et cetera.
Yes.
So if I took twenty-one thousand, up to twenty-one thousand, over the salary of this chef, full-time chef, I get close to sixty percent increase. If I got a, if I take her pay and multiply it by forty, by two thousand hours a year, I come up with something close to thirty-six thousand dollars the chef is getting paid, straight salary. Twenty-one thousand on top of that, to me, is a sixty, sixty percent increase. So I would also consider that maybe you're not charging enough by just upping a salary number by thirty percent. I would, I would say it's closer to sixty. But my biggest objection is, I don't know, a concept could be done, but using existing small businesses within the town instead of competing with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Because I think that's in violation of your economic development objective.
Can I just ask, have you ever had an occasion where an outside caterer came in and catered a function at the community center?
Yes.
Yes?
Several.
Several?
Um, we are-
What kind of circumstances? If someone just asked if they want to bring their own catering, they can do that?
Absolutely. They can bring whoever they want in. All we are offering is existing person for making things convenient. We are not out soliciting catering jobs. And I want to make that crystal clear. We are using an existing chef. And as far as outsourcing what the chef does, everyone that we looked at, and Mr. Hughes can back me up on this because it's been fifteen years of this argument, and if I sound like I'm getting testy, it just gets old after a while. It really does. The average cost of Casual Gourmet on up is eight dollars per person. Our chef makes our meals for four forty-two per person. If you can find somebody that is going to provide the quality of food that we have for the seniors that we have, the number that we have, and also be able to do emergency management and all the other things that we do, I defy you to try and find that for four forty-two. We've been down this road. The quality of food, when you get down to Meals on Wheels and other programs that other people have utilized, we have seen over the years, is not something you or I would want to consume.
Yeah. So just let me ask the question to be clear. On your spreadsheet, I think we said you had about a dozen party events in last year. How many catering events, outside caterers, have you had in the last year? Do you know? Just roughly? I mean, have been the same number, more?
Four that I can think of off the top of my head. At least four.
She said at least four that she can think of off the top of her head.
And just to comment on what you said, I don't think Mr. Gunderson was attacking council on aging. I think it was more of a pointing out-
I'm not so sure about that. But go ahead.
Well, he specifically pointed out birthday parties and events. So he wasn't talking about council on aging. And that's something that I think that I'd be interested to know. The salary, the indirect costs, and, and those things that, that I'm not sure are in the spreadsheet. And then the taxpayer versus non-taxpayer, are we doing this for a service for people in town? Or are we, or are we doing this to fill the space at the community center? What is the, what is the real, what do we, what are we doing?
The reason that this started was simply to try and assist people who came in who said, "My mother just died. I do not have the ability to go to Pompaness it in. I don't have that kind of money. And I have thirty-five family members. Could we do some kind of funeral collation here?" That kind of ask, I guess you could say.
Okay.
They're not all funeral collations. Please don't get me wrong. We've had graduation and other kinds of parties, but that's just one.
Just for clarity, the revenue from the council on aging for catering and for the senior dining programs goes where? Is it general fund?
It is general fund, but it is segmented off. We do have a food account that is used, I think, just for the food component.
Okay. But, but it goes into the general fund as opposed to a revolving fund?
Correct.
Okay. Ah, yes. The expenses are all in the general fund?
Yes.
So the chef is being paid out of the general fund, as are all the utilities, supplies, food, et cetera. It's all in the general fund. None of this is running through revolving funds?
No. It used to be a long time ago.
Right. The same thing for the room rentals. All general fund.
All general fund, yes.
Just want to clarify.
Angelo, yeah, you had it.
Yeah, I, I think this is one of those times when we're, we're trying to combine two things. The first piece is, is the very real dinner and lunch activity for people who need that for a variety of reasons and should have it. And we've been doing it for a long time. You put that aside and you hire a chef to, to do that. Then if you can figure out how to bring birthday parties in or any other kind of party in, what you're doing is you're offsetting the costs. If they, if they are costs. So right now, they're a little short on the dollars. If they get over, the net of running these parties is reducing what the taxpayers are paying for an activity that I think we all support. So if they could figure out how to run sixty parties, y, y, you know, which I don't imagine is going to happen, you end up offsetting pretty much a, a good part of, of the, of the chef. And that's one of the, the things you, that's an added benefit.
And that's what we're working now, going forward, July going forward, with both Andy and Chris Clark, on what to charge so that we do exactly what you're suggesting. So I, I just want to make it clear, this was not, hey, let's start a new catering business and put everybody else out of business. It had nothing to do with competing in any way, shape, or form. It's just you, you're bringing a package of people into the building. We're adding another convenience, just like when you come and ask for Caleb Chase Fund monies. We also talk to you about SNAP, food stamps, fuel assistance, et cetera. It's the same concept. It's one-stop shopping to try and make it more convenient for our residents.
Okay. Hugh? You've been patient.
Yeah. My position is very, very sharp, very clear. I don't think the town of Harwich should be competing with local businesses. There are also, there are other costs involved. It's not only the chef, but there's the accounting for the billing, the collecting. They don't pay who chases them. And then there's the meals tax. It, it, Barbara had just said it's collected. I don't think it's been collected in all cases. Thank you.
I can't speak to that, but, Mr. Gunderson?
I won't take long either. I, I just wanted to say, my position was what Mike McCaskill said. I'm not criticizing tonight the ongoing chef services for the council on aging. But to, to address what Angelo said, if you look at that chart that they provided, I just picked two dates, the June dates of, there were essentially twelve, twelve hours, yeah, twelve hours over an eight-period day, eight-period week, excuse me, if you just went from, I think it was a Friday to the following Monday. There were twelve hours that were being used and billed, I guess, for a party function. Well, let's assume you double and triple that business and go along the route that you're saying. Eventually, you think it's going to pay for something. But this person has a job already. This person is already working on lunches and dinners for the council on aging. So at some point, she's going to be working overtime. Or doing it for free. But so, at some point, you need another resource if it gets going. And my feeling is, why not outsource it? Then you don't have to worry about it. I'm not arguing about the council on aging existing services. I'm talking about running a catering business, which is what the title of this presentation was. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else on this topic? All right. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for the water and the zucchini bread.
Zucchini bread was great.
It was excellent. Yes.
And by the way, Hugh, I saw you ate something there. So that's-
You overhauled some money.
You're a customer. Yeah. Give him a bill. Please. Give him a bill. Thank you.
You collect the meals tax.
Ah, okay. All right. All right. Now we're going to move on to old business. We talked last time about town administrators FY sixteen goals and objectives. We did not vote them. I think the intent tonight is, if you're ready for it, to vote them. They have been numbered, just so you know that. But Chris, I don't think it's been edited at all since the last time-
No, it has not.
We talked about them. And we went through them last time, so I don't want to belabor this.
I just wanted to make sure people were comfortable and if the board's comfortable, then we can vote and I'll start working on them.
Peter, you just said they haven't been edited. So did we make changes or suggested changes?
Not that I know of, but not that I remember.
Yeah, I don't believe there was any changes to it.
Not to his.
I think that, I think that they were presented to us and-
Okay. And we didn't make any changes?
There might have been some discussion. I don't remember any substantive changes. So, so it's your pleasure, Roy. Michael?
I guess I have a question on number six. On, on the, could you just specify the, include two departments for review? It's come up once or twice and I don't know. Do you have something specific in mind? Are you just going to randomly pick?
No, actually, I, I probably should have been more specific on that in terms of the comments that I made at the last meeting. And no one, no one corrected me. So I presume, obviously, tonight, you know, discussion about the, the catering, I'm sorry, the, the chef. So I was going to look at the chef. I was going to look also at the nurse, just to see, you know, how do we currently operate those. And then the other two that I was going to look at was because over, over the time I've been here, there's been different comments or allusions made to it, is the engineering department and then the survey. So those were the four departments that I was looking at. I said two here, just so I have a little margin error. If I start working on it, it takes longer than I anticipate. I'll do two and then I'll come back with the other two at a later date. But those are the four that I was, that, that's what I've heard the most feedback from in the time I've been here, is areas where the potential exists to outsource. So I wanted to at least look at that.
I think you did mention that last time when you went through.
I, I did mention it. I didn't put it in here, though, in fairness.
That's a safe question.
Yeah, I just wonder if we need to specifically mention or, or specifically put a number in there, or just a review of departments. And then with that review, what do you expect to come back to us with? Is that, you're coming back to us with numbers that state if we outsource, it's going to be this versus if we keep it in-house?
Yeah. I, I hope that, I think in some cases, I'm going to be able to, to match up a private source. You know, a good example is VNA. VNA has a fee that they have associated. We have a contract with them through the Board of Health. And then how much is the, we pay the nurse on an hourly basis. So I don't know, you know, I, I, I have to kind of dig into this to see how I want to approach it. But if we approach it from the perspective, it could be something as simple as if we take that it costs the nurse, you know, seventy-five dollars when you count her base weight, her base wage plus the indirecs, and to duplicate that service would be a hundred dollars an hour. I, I may not go too far into kind of analyzing that. If it's something that's a little bit closer, then I may get more in depth. So I, one of the things I do want to say, you know, I, I want to keep an open mind. You know, I've been in different places. I've seen things contracted out. I've seen things done in-house. And I think it's an interesting exercise to go through and find out how efficient, you know, do we, do we do things? The other thing, I, I did have a conversation with one of the department heads and, and I was told that, it, it, just in, in the, in the nursing category, that we used to spend about fifteen thousand and now we're down to five. So I also want to make sure that if departments are realizing efficiencies, the way we do things better, I think that that's an important message to make sure the board's aware. The other thing I wasn't aware of, that, that since this discussion has come up, is I think in, I don't know how long ago, I think the engineer told me that there was a study that was done. I, I don't know if the board directed it or somebody directed about three or four years ago or just before he was hired. I, I think he's been on board for about four or five years as to, at that point, before the town hired somebody, there was a decision made, do we go out or do we hire from within? Or, you know, hire, recruit somebody. So I may take that study as a basis to start and, and see how that was done. But that's kind of a few of the initial thoughts that I have on the approach.
Thank you. And, and I will say, you know, part of what we ask for in the coming year is on a quarterly basis to get an update on these. So if we want to shift, you know, a little direction as we go forward, you know, we want to move from, say, looking at one department versus another or something like that. That can be done as we go forward. So.
Thank you.
As long as I get credit for looking at the departments.
Yeah, no, I understand. But it's, you know-
We'll pay you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Or someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we-
Do now.
I, I move that we accept town administrators' fiscal year sixteen goals and objectives as written.
Second.
Okay. Moving to second, to accept the town administrators FY sixteen goals and objectives. And there are eight of them, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion. Here now, we'll put it to the voters. If they're going to say aye.
Aye.
Close to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So Chris, that's what you had to work with for the, the coming year. All right. Going to move on to new business. It is getting a little bit late. There is a request by Pilgrim Congregational Church for a refund of building permit fees expended by their applicant, which is Clean Energy Solar, in the amount of six hundred and seventy dollars for solar, for photovoltaic project at the church. From your packet, I think you'll see that this is very similar to the kind of project that was done at, at St. Peter's Lutheran Church on one thirty-seven. I think in this case, though, it's, they're looking to get the money refunded because the clean, the, the design, Clean Energy Solar Company actually paid the fees, I believe, as opposed to the church paying the fees.
These are only the building permit fees. These are, these are not inspectional fees, correct?
That's my understanding.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah. And we have done that practice before.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the request by Pilgrim Congregational Church for refund of building permit fees in the amount of six hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Moving to second, to refund the, the building permit fees associated with the solar project at Pilgrim Church. Discussion?
I have a question. Yes.
Sure.
Um, further in our packet, it, it is stated about the general fee waiver policy for nonprofit organizations. It does state that it has to be, there has to be, where is it? A benefit to the, the town in order for this, I'm sorry, I didn't underline it. I can't underline it on my computer and I don't have a printer. So I just question that. Where does it say it here?
Top of, top of the page, third line down.
Which page?
General fee waiver policy for nonprofit organizations. General policy of the town of Harwich to reduce or waive a license permit or use or fee if there exists a need that is clearly defined and documented by nonprofit organization, and such reduction or waiver is in the best interest of the town.
Right. So, um, not to be a stickler, but, you know, we had a question about fee waivers come before us with the Knights of Columbus, was it? And, you know, we held strong to our policy. So I'm just wondering about this policy, is the, is this helping the town? Is this church project helping the town?
I think my comment to that would be that, you know, installing solar systems on the church is helping the town and that, just think of, of less environmental pollution because- in that, just think of less environmental pollution, because if you want to go that way, because you're not generating as many kilowatt-hours from, say, the canal plant, so...
I disagree with that.
Okay, well, you can, but...
I think it's policy, it's just, again, sending policy, if we use that kind of thinking, then we also could have said to the Knights of Columbus that it would be, we would be, what they were doing was helping the town because they were, I don't know, helping the structure of a building on a public way. I just, I don't know.
Angela, did you ever hand up?
There's someone who would like to make a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, come on up and get recognized, please. Tell us who you are and what your association is.
Thank you, my name is Frank Smith, and I'm a trustee from Pilgrim Congregational Church, and I'm also the building coordinator, representing the trustees, and have been the primary mover for the solar project on the church. One of the things that we did when, in the planning stages, was we determined what the total kilowatt-hour consumption would be, or has been historically for the church. And when we sized the system, we sized it to be a hundred and ten percent of whatever that usage was, with the express purpose of that extra ten percent of energy, which by state law allows us to generate a credit on our energy bill, and then donate those credits to any nonprofit organization within the operating area of Eversource. So that was a plan, right from the get-go, that we were going to contribute a portion of that back to the community. I don't know if that answers your question.
So you would say that would be part of the best interest of the town, right?
I would say so, yes.
Anything else you want to say? Yes, sir. Introduce yourself, please.
My name's Tom Weinman, I'm principal of Clean Energy Design, selected contractor for the project. And we also had the honor, if you will, of installing the St. Peter's Lutheran project about three or four years ago, in which we also had requested on their behalf, because we do pass the fees on to the church as part of the project costs. They be waived, now, my point would be to the, to the board, that solar projects in general, in addition to offsetting pollution, which is a benefit community-wide, also, solar projects are specifically a benefit to the community in that they deliver clean energy into the grid, into the community, when the grid is most stressed and in most polluting of any time, you know, at real-time use of energy. The church is not benefiting, the benefits they get of the utility credits that they are generating during those peak hours of grid use are actually costing the utility more than they're getting benefit for. So the community is ultimately benefited that, clean energy being delivered on the grid. When it gets down the road, ten or fifteen or twenty more years, and we start having real-time pricing and real-time benefits that are realized where lower pollution, energy sources are delivering energy cleanly, you know, then, then there'll be economic remuneration that exceeds what they're getting right now. But in general, the whole community benefits when clean energy sources are utilized on a local basis.
I understand what you're saying. So there's a lot of solar panels around town, so basically, it's the saying, the argument is that everybody that has solar panels is benefiting the community.
Correct, more than they're getting.
But only the nonprofit buildings or companies that put the solar panels up get to waive the permitting fees.
Well, that's the, but, but we also have the, you also are reducing, every renewable energy project that's done on a local basis is reducing the infrastructure needs of the town. In other words, EnStar or Eversource doesn't have to put bigger wires down, they don't have to put bigger transformers in. There's, there's community benefits, there's less disruption of putting more infrastructure into a town when you have more distributed renewable energy.
But Angela's point, if I could get to it, I think, is that, you know, household versus nonprofit versus a business, it's all doing the same thing as far as the grid goes, I would say. And so I think her point is, you know, if you're doing this for nonprofit, waiving the fee, why aren't we waiving the fee for a homeowner or a business or something? That's what, I think that's what the essence of her question is.
Right, exactly. That's exactly it, because we, we have to hold true to policy, just as we did with the dump fees.
Did I miss a point? Didn't you say that there was a sum of money that you were going to donate?
Ten percent, is what I heard.
Well, it's actually not money, it's credits on the energy bill that gets donated, that's correct. But, but there's a, an additional element to it as well, and that is, our church has an annual budget, a mission budget of approximately thirty-five thousand dollars a year that we give away to local, state, regional, national, international causes. The bulk of it goes to Cape nonprofits. And so, one of the things that we looked at when I first came on trustees a year and a half ago, was a recognition that our budget is experiencing stress. The change in demographics, the income levels and so forth, is causing us to take a step back and realize that we needed to take a more strategic approach. We needed to find new sources of revenue and reduce our expenses. The solar project is on the reduction of expenses side. And one of the reasons we want to do that is that we want to continue to maintain the budget for the mission that, of monies that we give away. And one of the ways we need to do that is we need to offset it some way. And one of the ways is to cut our expenses. And this project is going to do that, and it's going to allow us to maintain that budget of a mission that we give away locally.
The reason I asked my question is that during the winter in particular, we have many residents, not many, some residents who cannot pay their electric bills. And we have a fund that is handled by the Council on Aging people, and we supply them money to pay their bills. And we have a bit of, a number of requirements, like you get, we'll pay it once, you know, that kind of thing. And if indeed there would be a way to funnel some of that money through the Council on Aging, it answers the question, you're benefiting the people in town directly. And I don't know if that's the case or not, but we do have, I don't know, a dozen maybe during the course of the year, six to a dozen people, and we have limited funds, so if that works, it covers...
Hi, any further questions?
Unfortunately, I can't speak to the mission committee because they'd be the ones making that decision, but I could certainly make that recommendation to them.
We could always prove this pending that.
That's bribery, we can't do that.
Well, and then the...
I think we're getting a little away from the policy, that whether we like the policy or not, it is the policy.
That's where it's going.
But there's nothing in the policy that says that, you know, something has to go back to any fund. And whether we like the policy or not, or we think it should be extended to homeowners or businesses, stick with the policy, it's for nonprofit organizations. I'm just dragging us back into the specific of the discussion as opposed to the airplane ride.
So do you have a motion?
But, but what is the, what is the benefit to the public? What is the benefit to the town? I don't see any benefit, any, any specific benefit that this is providing that other solar panels don't. It's not, it's not a set benefit to the town. And what's to preclude nonprofit after nonprofit after nonprofit after nonprofit, church or not, coming in here now that solar's climbing, and the town is losing revenue on the building permits because of this so-called benefit to the community in general because of less electricity being produced by, you know, nuclear power or what have you?
Okay, we have a motion, it's moving to second, and we're in discussion, so...
I was just going to respond that I think this, this discussion is also going along the way of the charter discussion that we had earlier this evening. Does it say the intent, does it not say the intent, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? And we went round and round the cart on that one, and we just need to fix the words. I think that it is not defined in the policy, define the best interest of the town. I'm not prepared to say what I think that means. So it sounds like at some point, that should be revisited, and this policy should perhaps be adjusted for that. But now the intent, what is the intent?
Of what?
Of the policy. What is the best interest of the town? And using less infrastructure really is, does benefit the overall town.
Okay, for a discussion on the motion? I'll put it to the voters, and by the way, I'll just issue you the motion is to accept the N D request for a waiver of building permit fees.
Refund.
Huh?
Refund.
Refund, I'm sorry, the amount of six hundred and seventy dollars for the photovoltaic project at the church, Pilgrim Church. All's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose?
Aye.
Okay, it's four to one, thank you, thank you, good luck.
Thank you, very much.
When do you expect to be online, or are you online?
Within the month.
Within a month, yeah.
Right.
With Eversource's blessing, yes.
Yeah, good luck on that, it took us a long time to get our landfill solar hooked up and connected.
Been working on this for close to three years.
There you go.
Nothing personal, I'm just trying to stick to policy, the way it's written.
Okay, next item, I see we have the water commissioners here, so they can probably speak to this if they want to, or they're sleeping back there, I don't know which.
Always put us last.
Always put us last, all right, but here's your opportunity, if you want to wake up. We have every week a, in the interest of trying to get through different parts and pieces of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, I pull, or somebody, you know, pulls out a few slides, and we just put them up here and we discuss them. So this week's slides that we put in for the wastewater educational moment, we call it, the Howard's Drinking Water Sources. So you're very familiar with these maps, I'm sure. And Alan, so you might want to just explain where our drinking water comes from, and if you need a pointer, I have one.
Oh, that's all right. The areas of the map of Howard's that are shaded in, in the dark green there, zones of contribution to our drinking water wells. And it's kind of appropriate you put this up, because this is one of the issues that DEP raised on a relicensing effort that's in the works as the town was not displaying the proper zones of contribution or zone twos on the map. This appears to be the correct one, which covers all of Howard's. It, Chatham does come into Howard's, in the South Howard's area, and Rooster comes in to the North Howard's area. And each of these zones, what it amounts to is, there is a well field located within these areas, and the Depot Street area is, that's correct, right there. We have several wells in there, as well as Chatham, you know, over the line. So the water is drawn down, and as the wells are pumped, we're pulling water from these different areas, and the idea is to protect those areas, zone accordingly, and the actions that go on in those areas are limited. So in South Howard's areas, they're only allowed two bedrooms. And you can never change that because they're located in that zone of contribution. It's the same with the, going into the Chatham Road area, it would be the same with up in the Chatham Road area there, and then odd up into the Bay Road area, and then you're... So anything that goes on, like in the East Howard Zone, once you get to the east side of Route one thirty-seven, you are in that zone. So again, everything changes, like stop and shop, there's a lot of things stop and shop would like to do, but they can't do, or you can't have a restaurant in that zone. Those are restrictions poured out by our guardians, our guardians of the Board of Health. They mandate what kind of activities can go on in those zones, and the planning board incorporates those rules within the zoning. So the whole purpose of this update, which we would be sending to DEP and putting on our town site as well, to maintain these zones of contribution. And Capewide, they exist because we strictly pump groundwater. So you have to protect them, and again, you know, you hear so many people talk about fertilizer, you hear so many people discuss Eversource spraying. These all take their toll on the groundwater as we move ahead.
Alan, we have three of these that look almost the same, I'm going to ask Caleb to put the second one up, just might look a little different. Oops.
Oops.
I assume he has...
That's pretty.
There you go.
Yep. See, this one is not, that's not the correct, it goes further up in, shaded in. Where did you find that one?
It's in the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, and I can tell you exactly what figure it is. You might want to point out here, you know, this is where your new sand filter is, right?
Yep.
In that area?
Yep, yep, that's correct.
Because of that well, and if I remember correctly, you did that well because, at the time, I remember we talked about if we had an accident, you know, some kind of a pollution spill or something on thirty-nine or six, that you wanted, you wanted a well source, or at least a water source north of that accident, if you will, you know, if it happened, so...
Yeah, good point. Because once you get to the midcape, that water flows south.
Right.
Or to the east, to Pleasant Bay, anything else goes to the bay.
Yeah, that's another point to point out here, when you look at the ponds and all, the water does flow all the way from them in the kind of southeasterly direction, right?
So it's very important, you know, to, you know, stay right on top of this, and it is... We're always paying attention to it, and, you know, we speak up if there was something going on.
Caleb, can we have the next one, just for fun?
Yeah.
Just fun, I pulled all the ones that are about drinking water out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
No one's in there.
Yeah.
And then finally, you recognize that's very similar, right?
But, like...
And then the last one is about the nitrate results, our pro well sampling program.
Right here, yes. It's just started, you know, in the last, the last few years, you see a spike, what is that, two thousand and two? Yeah, that's just about it. And that was the Bay Road wells had showed for the first time, an increase in nitrate and...
But again, in all these cases, you're below what the Cape Cod Commission calls their threshold, and way below, you know, the so-called Safe Drinking Water Act limits.
I mean, we don't have any problems per se, crisis like Yamit does have wells that are shut down. Their nitrogen level exceeds the healthy level, so they actually had to shut those down. Their hopes are that they will get to clean that up. Wastewater treatment, there's a large-scale development above their wells, so as it flows south, it goes right into the wells. So we always have to stay on guard, I mean, this is a sole-source aquiferous groundwater. And again, the ponds, I kind of like Canary. When the ponds start going bad, like Kinkley's, for instance, it all feeds into the groundwater. That shows us what's going on in the groundwater. So, you know, as much as we talk about embankments, saltwater embankments, about wastewater, we should be talking about freshwater ponds just as much. And I, I just don't think that as the sewerling goes forth, that the freshwater areas will be exempted. I think we will have to treat around them. Maybe they won't require a major plant, but they may require some kind of a treatment for those homes around them to help preserve that water. Eventually, it feeds into the groundwater, and we spend money to clean the water the other way. I have to say, Westgate, we're online, it's, we're using that facility now. We've just finished up the new treatment plant there, and this will be, this has been a great opportunity for us because now we can, we don't have to, you know, kind of back off and not use that facility. Iron and manganese was so high there, and... Iron and manganese was so high there, and what it would do, or what it did, it just, you know, created rusty water in different parts of the town. But that's online now, we've eliminated that amount of iron and manganese going in, it was crazy because we're taking it out, taking it out on the east side of town, and putting it back on, putting it back in on the west side of town, and it all mixes in Harwich Port and West Harwich. So, this way, we cleaned up pretty well, and everything seems to be working pretty well.
Okay, you exceeded your time limit, and we usually do this in about five minutes, so that's great, and we're glad you're here. You may want to introduce our newest water commissioner though, just because I'm not sure he's ever come before us, so. Give him this chance to be on T V, just for a second, just so people can see who he is. Come on, Gary.
This is Gary.
Carrero.
Carrero, and he was newly elected at the May election, he took Donald Bates's place, and I expect that Gary will be around for the next eighteen years like Donald.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go.
He's learning more about water every day, right?
I have had the opportunity to go out and visit in the field with some of the employees in the department, and I'll tell you, there's so much knowledge, licensing, that these guys have to have, to make sure that Harwich has the water quality that we do have.
Right.
I'm just thankful we have, you know, Alan and that, they've been a great source, but I'm really, we have a fantastic department, so, I'm enjoying my time right now, I really am. It's a great department.
Thank you, thanks for volunteering, that's great, and Alan, you're gonna bring your new superintendent by sometime, right?
Yes, sir, yeah, I, we, we were planning to bring him on the tenth of August.
Yeah, yeah, good.
For the folks, you know, everybody can meet him.
Okay.
But that is on our agenda. Oh, the other thing I wanted to share with you is, under this new D E P licensing for water withdrawal permits, one of the issues in there is what conservation measures that the town is taking in all its town buildings. So, Daniel had the opportunity to meet with Sean Libby to go over that, so, when we report back during the licensing, that we can offer up a, a plus in that department, but.
Okay.
I got a feeling, I feel we're gonna fall short. The most efficient place now is the new high school, so I don't know what kind of actions have taken place in the town buildings. But, from, in reading what, what D E P puts forth, they would like the water department to oversee that, but that's not gonna happen, so.
Thank you.
You got it.
Okay, next is the Monomoy Regional School District slash Chatham Draft Concept Funding, Chris, is yours?
Yeah, this is, I had taken a stab, one of the goals and objectives was to try to come up with a draft concept. The only two changes that, well, yeah, the two changes that were made in this is the second paragraph, I added the, some flexibility depending upon economic circumstances larger than the economy, such as the state funding of chapter seventy, which is the primary funding, funding source for education in the state, the impact of school choice, charter schools impacts, circuit breaker in regional transportation, so those items have a fairly large significance. And then I believe it was Selectwoman Sebula who asked to have a, kind of a, a more illustrative example put in under number one, so I put in there an element of what new growth means, and what's the intent of that. So, that was added, and I, I see on the agenda that, you know, what the board wants to do with it, I know I presented this as at least a concept, and it's got draft on there, nice big letters, presented it as a concept to finance committee, obviously, I think the boards from Harwich, obviously Selectmen and Finance Committee should have a discussion with the, the Monomoy folks to, to make sure that there's buy-in to this concept, and then I think any partnership we do with Monomoy should include Chatham as a, as part of that discussion. Even though it's seventy-five, twenty-five rough numbers, they are part of the, the partnership.
So, how do you see that going, do you see us having, asking those folks to come in and have a discussion with us, or?
I mean, if, if the board wanted, I mean, you can keep it as simple as, I think, concept-wise, if the board's comfortable with it, send it and see what kind of reaction we're getting from people, if people think that this is a straightforward approach, then we can maybe draft something up for, for, you know, them to, to consider, or ask them, well, formally to consider. I did share this with, with Scott Carpenter, my, my counterpart, if you would, at the region, and then also, I happen to have a, a meeting where Jill was at it, my counterpart over in, in Chatham. So, they're aware of the concept, but I don't know if you wanted, maybe a place to start and see what we're in for, whether there's buy-in to this concept or not buy-in to the concept.
My draw this hard to at least get our financial numbers to say, what does, what does this really mean relative to what the school's published five-year plan is? And how close does it end up getting us, or how far apart are we, or, you know, do we have to shuffle something around, or? So, I would, I would suggest you take this, run a line, you know, as to, as to what the graph would look like, and then, let's see, overlay that with the five-year plan, I think, and see how they match up, because I don't know at this point in time. You know, it could be, it could be a year or above, it could be a year or under, but on, on average, it works out, I don't know. And, and to me, you know, the highs and lows get, you know, that, you know, if you're, if you're above it, as far as you get too much money, that's when they replenish their E and D account, they're bringing up the snuff, and when they're a little below it, you know, then maybe that's when they, they contribute something from the E and D account, but I think we have to see what it looks like over five years.
Who's going to under number three? The, you know, use of the excess and deficiency account, provided the amount is above targeted limits, limits, limits. Who's gonna define those targeted limits?
They had, I thought, provided a percentage when they came in, so that's been established.
We should probably, as part of Peter's request, what does that mean in terms of, do we actually have any money to pull out of that, or not? And are they going to, you know, do they have a commitment that they will use E and D?
And there are numbers that at least, and I don't remember what they were.
I just don't remember what they were.
It needs to be a percentage, or this, or that, or whatever, or so many millions of dollars, I forget the numbers, that, that are expected to be in an E and D account.
Yep, but I think that's part of the, that's part of that, if we run with this versus against what their five-year plan looks like, how does that overlay one over the other, that would be an important.
Well, I thought the idea behind this was by having everyone sign off, they make a commitment, obviously, this is five years looking forward. You know, I thought it was fascinating that the, the discussion with the Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago was, a couple of members of Finance Committee said, well, why would you authorize them to go that high? And other ones said, well, what happens if they need additional money, shouldn't they have the ability to go higher? So, you know, there was no uniformity of, of thought, and to my mind, you know, if, if this is something that we believe we can live with, and I understand the point, we'll, we'll do the projection. I, I think some of that I did put in here, that when you look at the Prop two and a half numbers from two thousand nine to, to current, I mean, we've been, the, the lowest percentage of increase was three point five eight, that's just on the two and a half, and the high was four point one. So, three point two five should be well within our ability to, to achieve that number. So, I think the question really is, you know, is Monomoy and the superintendent and the school committee able to live within that, within that number?
Yeah, and what they're gonna do if we don't do it for them, is they're gonna take and run these numbers, and say to their financial people, well, let's look at our five-year plan, does that get us our money or not? I mean, that's what's gonna happen.
Same thing, so we might as well do it.
So, we might as well do it, and, and by the way, from our last discussion about this, they have this anyhow, I mean, I think, and, well, I mean.
It's not gonna be a surprise to them.
Right, it's not gonna be a surprise to them at all, I just think we need to check our numbers and see how it looks, share that with our own Finance Committee, and then say, okay, how do we, how do we go forward? You know, do we use our liaison, for instance, the Monomoy Regional School District, and you, you know, Chris, to go, you know, talk to them and whatnot, do we, what do we do? Do we form a little group with the Finance Committee to go meet with them, I don't know, something like that.
Okay.
Angela?
I, I don't think the Finance Committees, either Chatham's or ours, should be on here signing things. They don't do the budgets, and they don't have policy in the finance area, and I think particularly with knowing some of the, the situations we've had with the, the Chatham Financial Group and their attitudes to certain things, I think would make it very difficult. I think we have the Board of Selectmen in both towns, and the school committee sign it, rather than, than anybody else. Obviously, you share it with them and work with them, I'm not saying, that's a point, I'm just doing, thinking something else. I think you'd get a hard, hard bidding of signature on there from, from the Chatham Finance Committee, period.
Mike?
Other than a basic understanding, what does this document really do? If, if Monomoy comes back three years from now and says, so, other than making a gentleman agreement, why are we making such an official document?
The intent was to try and look out for five years and see if we can agree to a funding formula, basically, that says we're all gonna, to the best of our ability, live within that funding formula. I mean, it's that simple.
But it's.
As instead, instead of going through the trials and tribulations we went through last, you know, last, last budget season, which, in my mind, took a lot of effort on both parts, everybody's part, and detracted a lot from what we were able to do in town government, just because we didn't spend that much time in town government, we spent more time in the schools, quite frankly.
If we hold, if we, if we make this agreement, and they can't hold up to the end of the bargain, they just come back and force me to go through what we went through last year.
I guess, but you know, at least you can sit there and say you tried.
Okay, do you need a point four?
What?
Do you need a point four?
Point four.
The point four being that if the school decide, determines that they need additional funds, that they go forward with the override?
It has it in there already.
I didn't see that.
In the top, it says, let me see, um, I think in the first one, "In order to achieve some sense of fiscal discipline, the parties acknowledged below formula will be used to determine the financial resources and agree to attempt to keep overall costs unless Proposition Two and a Half exceptions to exceed are utilized for specific budgetary purposes."
In the end, whatever we come up with, they can say, no, we're not interested, and we just go back to what we.
So, if they had to, theoretically, if they would ever wanted to put an addition on, they're not gonna be able to do within the three, three point two five percent, so they'd have to go for a capital exclusion, or whatever their case may be.
Can Monomoy, excuse me, Ange, but to your point, can Monomoy ask for a debt exclusion or an override on our? See, they can't do that, so, they're not the ones who would be asking that, we would have to put the article up to say, we want to have an override to fund the schools, we want to do this, that, and the other thing. I don't think they can put something on our warrant.
That's right.
Is that correct?
They cannot, right.
So, they're just gonna tell us they want money, and we're gonna have to pony it up. I mean, I agree with you, Michael, I'm not sure, you know, this, we can go through this conversation, but I'm gonna bet dollars to donuts, we'll be at the same twelve percent increase, and then be fighting about it, you're, you know, eight months from now.
Can, can we, as a minimum, in our next meeting, which is the tenth?
Tenth.
Have this projection overlayed on the five-year plan they have, is that possible?
Isn't that the?
Let's just see what it, you know, let's just see what it looks like, I mean, I mean, if we're always three hundred thousand dollars apart, we're wasting time, so.
Okay.
All right, any else?
No.
Okay.
Under Town Administrator Report, just on the middle school insurance update, I, I did provide some material in the packet. Basically, it was lesser cost having it on our blanket coverage, it'll be a little bit more expensive, and the lady from my Massachusetts International Insurance Association did agree to provide what that cost difference was, so the replacement value is actually cheaper because I think it's really economies of scale. I did not ask, and I don't believe the board wanted me to ask, about getting a specific quote on vacant building coverage, I don't think that, that's something that's really viable unless, the, the funding. And once I get that information from her, I'm happy to, to provide that. I realize that some of the folks from the water department may be here for that item B.
Well, hang on, one second on the middle school thing, so, with the exception of getting that one number, are we, have we completed this topic, are we done, we?
From my perspective, I, I tried to look at, some of them were editorial comments, I didn't respond to editorial comments, I tried to respond to substantive comments. So, I mean, from my perspective, hopefully, this moves us on.
Okay, I, I do think, I think you related to me that you and Mr. Gunderson met on this topic, is it?
Yeah, I have reached out to, to have discussion too.
All right.
To enhance our communications.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then, on the, the next one, during the budget process, an issue had come up about the, the solar field and the revenue, that the, the town or administration had the, the concept that we would actually take the three hundred thousand and just apply it as a gross number to the overall budget. As we started to drill down, and as we started to realize that, it became clear that, I was concerned that we couldn't just do it to the budget, that because we operate the water department as an enterprise fund, that we would have to dedicate those revenues related to the water department specifically back to them. And I asked, initially, I asked Dave Scannell to look at it, Dave kind of answered a different question, which I think that material was in there, but then I asked Andy to follow up with the auditors, or an auditor, and to find out from D O R how we should handle that, and Tony Rassus, which is a, one of the higher-ups at the Division of Local Services for Department of Revenue, came back and basically said that, yes, if there was a, a credit due them on, if, I, I use the example of thirty percent of the town energy use is related to the water department, that they would be entitled to thirty percent of the related credit to that. So, we are gonna have to, to go with that concept and comply with the Department of Revenue, just in terms of what the impact of that will be to the board. And I have to go through this with Andy, Andy is, we, we have to look at the numbers, but in essence, just, and again, this is just an example, that if we generate four, four megawatts out of that facility, if two megawatts are related to the town, we get that in the form of a credit, that we actually get a check back from them. So, we get fifty percent of, of that. There are what they call off-taker towns, we, we don't have enough, we, we generate too much electricity, you know, too much electricity out of that field to be able to use it all for ourselves, those off-taker entities, Monomoy is one of them, just to, to give you a sense, they are legally a different entity. But they actually share, and this happens with all off-takers, that they get twenty-five percent of the, the savings, and we get the other twenty-five percent. So, it's still fifty, but we share it with those off-taker towns. So, what we need to do, and I had a conversation with Andy today, is we will go through that analysis, we will figure out, is it fifty-fifty for the town versus the off-taker? All the money related to the off-taker would be directly to the, to the revenue for the community, but in the area of use of the town, that if, if the water department is approximately thirty percent of that fifty percent total that we receive, that would have to be money credited back to them. And in that, we would have to go through and make sure that we identify what that amount of the credit is. We did collect revenue this year, F Y sixteen, if, yeah, F Y sixteen already, so we would have to assess that portion and to, to the water department, and then, going forward, we'd create some kind of formula, so we would have that, so it would be an ongoing, ongoing arrangement.
Linda?
Couple of questions. These solar panels are sitting over the transfer station, and it's the solar panels that are generating electricity, yes?
Yes.
Okay, what does that have to do with how many meters we have in town, and whether or not something has to be allocated to another function? I'm, I, you know, aside from the off-taker towns, but. But, I mean, this says, if the Water Enterprise Fund is responsible for thirty percent of the electricity generated by the town.
Should be consumed, by the way.
It should be consumed by the town.
It's, that's supposed to be consumed.
Correct.
Oh, no wonder it doesn't make any sense to me.
They're low, yeah, they use thirty percent electricity in town.
Yeah, but it says generated here.
I know, just.
So, it's supposed to be consumed.
Consumed.
Ah, that makes a little more sense, okay. I'll go to the next piece, which is, it would have been nice if we had had this robust thinking a while ago, because in the general fund, we've already spent that three hundred thousand dollars on raises for the employees through the union contracts. That's specifically what we did, so, it sounds like as we move forward, if we are having to do this, and nothing against the water department, if we're having to do this, then it sounds like somewhere the town administrator's gonna have to make this money up, because we also, I know that something I'm gonna push for, and I think others are too, is we, in the F Y, the budget we're in currently now. is we, in the FY, the budget we're in currently now, that we kind of, the building maintenance area basically didn't get anything. Other departments did, and they should probably be next in line to get some funding. So it sounds like you're gonna have to make up $90,000, maybe, in this budget this year if we're going to be allocating funds out. And I don't know where you're gonna find that.
Well, one source is, when does your new cell tower come on board? I remember our deal is we get 50 percent of that.
Yeah, that's already, I think...
But that's already in the budget.
Huh?
Are you speaking about A and P?
Yeah.
Did they cancel it?
They canceled it?
Oh, just recently, I was gonna say, because they were in the...
Somebody gonna tell us that? Lack of interest?
Yeah, the last meeting I was at, it was still on target, so this is very recent.
But it's, but it sounds like we're gonna have to find $90,000 in our budget in order to fund this. We're gonna have to make sure that that happens next year in the budget, but this is, it's unfortunate that this robust thinking didn't happen. And that this sort of comes up, and we've already spent the money, because this isn't chump change.
I also think you have to look at the actual numbers for the solar fields, I think they're actually producing, I mean, one golden part of it is, is putting out a little bit more than we thought, I think.
We need some level of analysis on this.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll get the, we'll get the direct financial impact.
And it's a huge impact.
Not the first time I've been in this business that, you know, sometimes you get good news and sometimes you get bad news. So in terms of the robust thinking comment, you know, quite honestly, I mean, Dave Ryan and I talked to the folks at the state and said, you know, how is it gonna be allocated? Is it gonna be allocated as a credit or is it gonna be allocated as cash? We couldn't even get that answer. I mean, they came out very late in the game and said, oh, by the way, it's gonna be cash. So, you know, we were focused on getting the thing activated, getting this, you know, the revenue stream going. So, you know, did we miss it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess we did.
Well, it's, it's a big miss, I mean, it's, you can't be a one-trick pony, but, so I don't know where we're gonna find this kind of money, but it's, it's a, it's a little stressful.
Chris, what's a reasonable amount of time for you to work with Andy and get back to us with this?
Probably within about 30 days.
30 days.
30 days, yeah. We should be able to piece it together. The, the next item that I have is on the, we had arranged for a Chatham treatment plant tour, and we've had a few people kinda canceled, so I, I just wanted to get a sense. I don't know if it's gonna be Wednesday, July 29th at 2:00. Right now, it's actually, Wednesday, July 29th, yep. Angelo, myself, Michael, and then Peg Gabor, one of the people that attended one of the meetings and signed up. But I know, I don't think, Linda, you could make it as at least my notes.
I've already been twice, so I don't think I needed to go a third time.
Jim Chevri, Chevri, Chevri. Terrible with French names. But, so he actually called today, could not, decided he could not make it, something came up, and Ann Howe. So the two question marks that...
Yeah, I emailed, but I can't...
Janelle and Peter, I don't know if you...
Wendy Hart...
I'm gonna try and get there, but like, today I can't commit, but I'm gonna try.
Okay. Wendy, we haven't heard back from...
Okay.
So I, I guess I'm doing this in a, in a way where if people do wanna go, we've had several cancellations. I wanna make sure that, that Bob Dunkinson, you know, Dr. Dunkinson there has, you know, people that are, a group that, that's worth, worth his while. But it's 2:00 Wednesday, July 29th, so, and if you're interested, please contact the office, we'll provide the address, so if you, you can just meet us over there. But right now, we did say yes to him at the tours ago, so I just wanted to make that, that effort. And then also, the next item is on the Assistant Town Administrator search. Those applications are due in at the end of, I think it's the end of next week in August, so we won't have a meeting between now and then. We have got a fair amount of activity, which is good and bad, which means a lot more resumes to kinda go through. On the town administrator side, the committee, we were looking, I thought we were looking at a seven-person committee, Link, who is here tonight, is gonna be on, Carolyn is gonna be on that committee, and Tom Gagnon. And I don't know how the board was making out with, I think the board wanted to have three people on that committee. So come, whatever, August 3rd, I guess we'll be, not August 3rd, August 5th or 6th, we'll start scanning those and sending those out. And I know that only Tom Johnson, to my knowledge, has, has put in...
That's right.
I did have, Anita had expressed an interest in, in being on that. I just throw it out as, as a name, she technically is an elected official, not really in my mind an employee, I at least throw the name out. And then I don't know if there's anyone else, but I guess part of tonight is kinda make a plea that you guys have a few people to, to hopefully be able to interview. And I don't know if there's anyone else that I'm unaware of. I was a little bit out of commission last week.
Wednesday, we're gonna post a meeting for next Wednesday and hopefully interview. Leo Kokounis has expressed interest.
Oh, that's right, Leo did.
And he'll get down and fill out an app. And then, there was one other one that I'll follow up on that was gonna come down and fill out an app. I don't know if they did with...
I know Tom Johnson did submit a letter today, so I, I saw that today. He may have submitted...
It's the only letter we have, so...
And then we're gonna have a posted meeting next Wednesday, where we can do some interviews.
And that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I can see your point, Angela?
Nothing.
Linda?
Nothing.
Janelle?
I had one comment, Chris, from, from somebody that lives on South Street about the tape that's around the trees in front of the elementary school. It looks as though the school's gonna cut them all down. Can you talk to Scott Carpenter and find out why he's taking down the ones that are alive versus the ones that are dead?
Yeah, I did have a conversation with him, I, I just can't, it's not coming to me why. It was, it was kind of a complaint that they taped them all off, they're cutting them down, are they gonna replace them? If you could follow up with Scott. I think that's true, I think that is true, they are gonna, let me get a better...
If they're alive, I don't see the need to cut them down.
I believe, I know we were trying to schedule the, the, kinda the chairman's meetings, we, we didn't work out on our end, but I know I was off last week, I know he's off this week, so I'll send something over, but I don't anticipate a, a quick response.
Okay. And I will remind the board and everybody out there that our next meeting on August 10th is the, let's just call it the Annual Non-Resident Taxpayers Meeting. So, you know, we'll be trying to do some presentations and whatnot that hopefully get an audience, sometimes we don't. Yeah?
Most times.